Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's meeting of the San Mateo Planning Commission. If you will all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner John Ebner, Commissioner Ramiro Maldonado is excused, Commissioner Ellen Mallory, Vice Chair Mike Etheridge, Chair Diane Whitaker.
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight's consent calendar, typically, we review the minutes from the previous meeting, but tonight, we're going to carry forward the meeting minutes from the January 8th meeting to our February 12th meeting of 2019. So now, it's the public comment period for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any speaker slips for items other than tonight's project?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to address the commission on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, close the public comment period, and before we move to the public hearing, Commissioner Ebner would like to make a statement.
I will be recusing myself on this matter because my employer has worked with this developer on commercial projects, and while there is no conflict of interest per the State Political Reform Act, I want to avoid the perception on my part in this body of any wrongdoing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the public hearing. It's item number two on the agenda, and it is 1, 2, and 3 Waters Park Drive, and we'll start with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Whitaker and members of the commission. My name is Lily Lim, project planner for the item before you tonight, which is 1, 2, 3 Waters Park Drive, PA 18013. So the project site consists of two parcels, approximately 11 acres in size, with Burrell Creek to the north, single-family residences to the south and the east, and then Highway 101 to the west. There are currently three two-story office buildings comprising of approximately 163,000 square feet of floor area, and the current general planned land use designation is executive office and zoning designation of E1, which is Executive Park. The project proposes to demolish all three office buildings and construct 190 for sale dwelling units, including a mix of 22-story detached, single-family residences, and 163 three- and four-story attached multifamily residences. The project also proposes publicly accessible privately-owned open space, which includes a trail along Burrell Creek, which leads to a dog park, and associated private open common space for the residents. So here are a list of the required entitlements. It's a site plan and architectural review for 190 for sale dwelling units, site development planning application for the removal of major vegetation, a vesting tentative subdivision map to create individual, single-family lots, and 162 condominium units with associated common space, zoning reclassification from E1 to Executive Park to R3, which is multifamily dwellings, a general plan land use designation amendment from executive office to medium-density multifamily, general plan building height amendment to increase the maximum permitted height from 35 feet to 45 feet. This is consistent with the land use designation in which they're requesting to amend, a planned development special use permit to reduce minimum lot size, and setbacks for single-family residences. And just a reminder, the project also requires approval from the city council. Here is the project data based on the proposed zoning, which is R3. So the current density, which is proposed, is 17.1 units per acre. Typically, a lot of this size would allow for 34.84 units per acre. The floor area ratio proposed is .896, and the maximum is .85, and I will get to that later, which we will talk about the density bonus. The height is 20 feet 2 inches, it ranges from 20 feet 2 inches to 44 feet, and that's inclusive of the single-family homes and the multifamily. The maximum allowed is 45 feet based on the R3 zone. The parking, they're utilizing the state standards, which would require them 248 stalls. They're proposing 425 stalls, and the required open space based on the planned development requirements is 131,000 square feet, and they're proposing 151,000 square feet. And I just wanted to note, on your current data sheet, the required rear setback is actually based on the R1 standards, which is the rear of the single-family lots, which is, sorry, I'm going to get to that in the next one, but 15 feet for the first story and 25 feet for the second story. So here's the single-family information. The lot sizes along the southern and eastern property lines will be subdivided into smaller, single-family lots. The lot sizes range from 2,700 to 3,900 square feet, and typically, for an R1, single-family lot, the minimum would be 5,000. And then, the required setbacks would be 15 feet to the front, 5 feet to the side, 15 feet to the first story, and 25 feet to the second story. So what they're requesting is a planned development special use permit, which is intended to enable and encourage flexibility of design and development of the land in such a manner that promotes its most appropriate use. So given that there is a single-family neighborhood to the south and to the east, they are requesting a special use permit to have these smaller lots and deviate from the R1 standards, which would be for a single-family home. So the proposed setbacks are, it ranges from 5 feet to 22 feet for the front setback, 4 feet for the sides, 15 for the rear on the first story, and then ranging from 15 to 27 feet on the second story. And then, the height for an R1, single-family lot is typically 24 feet to the plate line and 32 feet to the roof peak. The proposed is 20 feet and 2 inches to the plate, and ranges from 28 to 30 feet to the roof peak. So the consultants on this project, the city hired Hexagon Transportation Consultants to do the transportation impact analysis, which studied the traffic and circulation. We also hired Cannon Design Group to do the design review, and David J. Powers and Associates to do the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. Hexagon and David J. Powers and Associates are here tonight for any questions. So in May of 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed this project in a study session form to review the design aspect, as well as a comment letter from Cannon Design Group, which is included in your packet tonight. There's a variety of home styles, including single-family and multifamily. Based on the review from Larry Cannon, a majority of the recommendations were incorporated from that meeting, including all the comments from the commission that they provided at that time. And those, so the outstanding comments are related to the 12-unit row homes, and that includes setbacks on the third and fourth floor. Currently, it's proposed with several inches setback from each floor, and according to Larry Cannon's letter, he's unable to conclude whether or not that amount of setback is sufficient. The design guidelines don't have a number, which it suggests, so that's something that the commission can consider. However, staff believes that it is in substantial conformance with the city's multifamily design guidelines. So as I mentioned, Hexagon did do the traffic study, and based on the existing use, which is office, these are estimated trips based on actual AM and PM counts from February of 2018, when the office was not fully occupied, and that came up to 1,300 trips. And based on the proposed use of single-family and multifamily, these are rates based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation, land use type standards. The number for trips for this project is 1,145, for a net trip of negative 160. So as I mentioned earlier, the project is requesting a density bonus, so providing 10% affordable units, which is 19 units, they are eligible for one incentive or concession and the use of statewide parking standards. That equates to one space per 0-to-1 bedroom unit, two spaces per 2- to 3-bedroom unit, and 2 1/2 spaces for 4-plus bedroom units. The concession which they're requesting is an increase in floor area of 0.896, where the maximum allowable in an R3 zone is 0.85. So as I mentioned, the parking, there will be 45 uncovered guest parking stalls on the street, and two private garage stalls per unit, and that's including side-by-side and tandem spaces. And then, one stall per unit and one guest parking stall will be EV-ready per the San Mateos Building Code. The project is requesting to remove 233 trees, 65 of which are heritage trees with 22 different species. All but 95 of them are located within the buildable area, and the other 95 are located within the required setbacks. However, they are, according to the ARBIS report, in poor and fair suitability for conservation. Poor quality, poor suitability for conservation means their expected decline during or after construction regardless of management, and fair means that they require intense management and monitoring before, during, and after construction, and may have a shorter life expectancy after development. Although they are removing 233 trees, they are proposing to plant 287 new trees, which will be along the walkways, the surface parking areas, and the perimeter of the site, including those abutting the single-family residential districts. So the public noticing for the site, the city is required to notify property owners, residential, and business tenants within 1,000-foot radius of the project site, including the city's 900 list, which includes homeowners and associations, and our notify me list, which is an online system that allows residents to enter in their information and receive weekly updates from the city, as well as interested parties specific to this project. So anyone who has contacted the city or has shown any type of interest has been placed on a list and has been notified as well. And the city sent out noticing during the city-required neighborhood meeting during the pre-application stage, as well as the pre-app, sorry, sorry, the Planning Commission study session during the pre-application stage, also during the May 2018 Design Focus Study Session, as well as the notice of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and this Planning Commission public hearing. When the initial study and mitigated negative declaration was published, we received comments relating to traffic, air quality, and noise during construction, effects on property values and tree removal. Responses to those comments are included in your packet tonight. Additionally, staff received public comments from property owners in the vicinity regarding structural damage, privacy, damage to fences, height of single-family residences, water supply, rodents, trash enclosure location. Staff responded to all these public comments and have provided copies of these comments before you tonight. The applicant also informed staff of neighborhood meetings that were not required by the city and used a radius greater than what the city typically requires, and the applicant has worked with adjacent neighbors to address certain concerns. So as I mentioned, David J. Powers and Associates prepared an environmental impact assessment under provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. They prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and the conclusion was that there are no, this project does not have significant impacts, and there are project mitigation measures as part of the conditions of approval to ensure that the project does not have significant And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Thank you, Lily. I just had one question clarifying the R3 zoning, which is what I see on a lot of our packet. And then, I saw that there were R1 designations for the single-family dwellings, for some of the requirements for that. So how does that work between the R3 and the R1?
So they are asking to rezone it to an R3, and they are subdividing the smaller lots to turn them into single-family homes. Within our R3 zone, single-family homes are permitted, and based on the type of use on an R3, they have different standards. And so because they're proposing single-family homes, we were applying, we were just comparing the R1 standards to show how this is different than an R1 lot, since they are similar uses but are zoned differently.
Okay, but that particular parcel then will still be zoned R3?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Is this the appropriate time to ask questions about the traffic study, or would that be more appropriate after the applicant has presented?
It's up to you. How extensive are your questions?
Our consultants are here also, so they can answer any questions.
Okay, well, I noted that the extensive public comment, there's quite a bit of skepticism around the traffic, the residential development traffic study that was provided. And when I was looking at it, it provides, it puts forth that there will be a reduction in trips, daily trips, in and out of the development. Specifically, so my question is, I'd like to better understand the assumptions that go into this. With 190 units, the study is putting forth that there are going to be 1,100 daily trips in and out of the development, which that sounds about right. During the peak commute time, it puts forth that there are 59 trips out of the complex, and during the evening commute time, that there are 61 trips in. And so I'd like to try to understand, what's that assumption that during a peak hour, like, how do you translate 1,100 daily trips, 190 units, into 59 cars leaving? That is a sentiment that was in quite a few of the public comments, and I'm frankly confused about it as well. It doesn't make sense to me as well. So if I can better understand the assumption that goes into that, that might be to the benefit of everybody that's here.
Good evening. Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. We did the traffic study. Be happy to answer your question. So there are two, I guess, numbers. One is the existing, and then one is the estimated for the project. The existing traffic, we simply counted the driveway, so that's pretty logical. For the proposed project, we have a standard resource that we use to estimate traffic, which is called the Trip Generation Manual, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And what that manual does, it's really a compendium of trip generation research from California and pretty much all around the country about, for typical types of development, how many trips we can expect to see, because that's what we need to estimate. And so our way to estimate that is to look at projects that have already been built and see how many trips those are generating, and then come up with a rate, and then apply that to our estimate for the future. And so, those are the rates that were used, and I think I can stop there in case you have any other questions about it.
So when you make this assumption that there's 1,100 daily trips, but 59 or maybe 4% of the total trips are during the morning commute time, and then 60 trips coming back in in the afternoon, is that a percentage or an assumption that would be consistent with when you're observing a community or development?
Yes. The way that the research is done is that counts are made of the developments that are built and occupied, and simply count the number of cars that are going in and out of the driveway, and then relate that to the number of units. So there's no surveys done of the residents to ask them, you know, how many cars do you own, or where do you work? It's just simply counting cars going in and out of the driveway, relating that to the number of units. I should also point out that though we use ITE rates, we have confirmed those rates for a number of developments in San Mateo that have been built recently, that have been studied, and so we feel confident that those are representative of development in San Mateo.
Okay.
Is that it?
Question on the traffic.
Any more?
Not yet.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
I think my other questions can wait until the next.
I just had one clarifying question. When you were doing the staff report, and you talked about the number of single-family dwelling units versus the other, I thought I heard different numbers than what was on the screen. So could you tell us once again how many single-family dwellings and then the other type of housing units?
Yeah, so there are 28, single-family detached, and then there's 162 multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Nope.
Staff.
Okay, move on to the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Cohen. I'm a principal with Strata Investment Group. We are the owner and developer of this site. It's been almost two years since we acquired Waters 1, 2, 3, and we did so primarily based on the premise that we could, in fact, do something quite unique. I think of it as the holy grail for Bay Area public policy, which is to add desperately needed for-sale housing and at the same time reduce traffic. And while admittedly, this is a rare opportunity, and we'll get into why, if you could hit the first slide, please, the math is really quite simple. And, oh, thank you. I do want to make a point. These numbers are based upon, I think, what Lily alluded to, where the current counts. The Hexagon report also looks at if the building were properly occupied. Since we bought this building, we've been decanting it of tenants. We've refused to enter into anything more than a month-to-month lease. And again, while it's sort of counterintuitive, the math is really quite simple. Office occupancies are much greater at a per-square-foot level than residential occupancies. And by dramatically reducing the number of people coming to and from the site every day, not surprisingly, you reduce the number of automobile trips, especially during, as you just heard, AMPM peaks. So in this case, as you know, the city's own study not only found a reduction in units, but at full occupancy, it's 50% less during AMPM peaks. Frankly, even if we could add this housing and reduce traffic by one trip, I'd say we have an incredibly unique and compelling project here, but as you can see, the data is much stronger than But we didn't simply rest on the idea of housing production and traffic reduction. We've worked very collaboratively with city staff, with the city's design consultant Larry Cannon, and this commission, and I wanted to clarify something. We actually had two study sessions, you may recall. The first study session was about the big idea. Should we convert an office park to medium-density residential? When we got the affirmative on that, we went to the second study session, which is really much more focused on design. We've also had a number of meetings with community stakeholders, and our intent has been to try to deliver a thoughtful, high-quality design. The land use plan has a couple key principles. One of them, and Lily alluded to this, is the project's designed to deliver a wide variety of for-sale homes. So we have detached, single-family homes, we have townhomes, we have row homes, we have stacked flats. Now, that kind of diversity plus high-quality materials is good urban design, it creates a pleasing aesthetic, but as importantly, it serves an incredibly underserved portion of the housing market. As you know, most of the new development that's been approved in the mid-peninsula over the number, last number of years, have been smaller multifamily apartments, and the existing housing stock, as we know, tends to be very, very expensive. This mix of housing, particularly the attached townhomes and row homes and the stacked flats, are designed to serve first-time homebuyers, families, and seniors, and it's an important part of the market that frankly hasn't been served Second, from a land planning, and this was to address privacy concerns from next-door neighbors, and really to create a smoother transition with those neighborhood. The land plan wraps the entire southern and eastern edge of the site with two-story, single-family homes. I should note, the reason we sort of put R1 into R3 was because we didn't want to put big, tall, super-dense eight-unit, no, super-dense, eight-block row homes or townhomes there. We actually were trying to respect that edge by doing detached, single-family homes, two stories lower than the height limit would allow. They also include generous backyards, fencing, planting, all intended to address. They also include generous backyards, fencing, planting, all intended to address privacy concerns. Conversely, the three- and four-story townhomes, row homes, and stacked flats are pushed to the middle, and closest to the freeway and to the adjacent office park. Third, we spent a lot of effort on the public realm in creating a series of what we hope will be really wonderful open space and recreational amenities. These will all serve not just the new development, but the surrounding community. These improvements will all be privately funded, privately maintained, but permanently publicly accessible through a public access easement. Lilly alluded to a few of them. They include a creek trail, which has overlooks, the public dog park, dog run, really, a picnic and barbecue areas, active and passive play areas for children, and a community garden. And you can see here just a few precedent images. So in addition to the public policy holy grail, and trying to do a good job on design, there were a number of other public policy goals that we addressed. We're doing all of our affordable housing onsite, as opposed to feigning out. And I should note, in contrast to some of the apartment projects that have recently come before you, a onsite, affordable, 700-square-foot unit is one thing. These are affordable homes for families that are included onsite and in the project. We are including and embracing a number of best practices in environmental sustainability. We are doing 100% electric renewable energy from Peninsula Clean Energy. In fact, when you take these sustainable features and combine them with the trip reduction, the project will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by almost 1,000 metric tons. You know, in, and I'll talk a little more about some of our community meetings, but very early on, just in the listening process, one of the things we heard was how awful 19th Avenue in Norfolk was. Before we started this project, we had hired our own traffic consultant, Fair &amp; Peers. They're nationally known. They came to the identical conclusions that Hexagon did. But we asked them and said, look, are there things that could be done to improve wake times at 19th and Norfolk? Indeed, there were, and we have agreed to make a voluntary contribution of $250,000 to implement those changes. Finally, we have a long history of excellent relations with labor and across the building trades. And while we haven't selected a general contractor, and a number of the specific trades are undetermined, because this project is stick-frame wood construction, we know we're going to have a ton of framing. And so we have already agreed to agreement with the Northern California Carpenters Union that this will be a union project. For all these reasons, we're very proud of this project. We know that no project is perfect, but we think this one is really darn good, and it's quite unique. We're also aware, this isn't the first time we've been through a process like this, that development issues raise very real and legitimate concerns amongst the neighbors and in the communities where new development occurs, even at this site, even with this dynamic. And I would not dare to speak for our neighbors, I'm sure you're going to hear from them, labor, but I would like to offer just a few observations around our community outreach process. First, as a company, Strata prides itself on going above and beyond when it comes to community outreach. So in addition to the two study sessions and the pre-app meeting that were hosted and noticed by the city, we hosted three separate voluntary community meetings that, at the location of the site, actually four, if you count the meeting we had with some of our neighbors just this past Friday night. And I obviously can attest to the city's noticing process. I can tell you, our efforts were thorough. We noticed over 800 people. It was actually a larger radius than the city laws required, and maybe more importantly, sincere. We didn't, we weren't required to do this legally. It was really a sincere effort to try to reach out to our neighbors. Second, and you said it perfectly, Commissioner Etheridge, at every single meeting, particularly when we saw someone who this was the first time they heard about our project, we were met with great skepticism about the traffic conclusions. And frankly, it's understandable. Across the Bay Area, policymakers like yourselves are usually faced with kind of an agonizing decision, which is how do you balance this severe housing crisis with very legitimate concerns about the crazy traffic congestion that we have all over the Bay Area? It's not the case here, even if we could just save one trip. It's less. It's a lot more than that. And this is a unique opportunity. It doesn't happen often. You have to actually be willing to buy an office building, kick tenants out, and knock it down to try to get to this math. But I do understand the skepticism. We've been sort of trained to think that new development has to meet, has to lead to worse traffic. I would say also, particularly with our neighbors on Adrian and Norfolk, and you saw some of this reflected in Lilly's comments, there were a lot of issues about construction impacts. Again, totally understandable. And there's no way to avoid any inconvenience from construction. It's going to happen. But as you know, the C-COR process, and there's a whole host of state, federal, local laws, building codes, that require us both to study and mitigate a number of these construction impacts, everything like air quality, construction dust, rodents, drainage, utility capacity, soils conditions, natural habitats. Most, if not all, of those issues on that list were addressed, and staff has noted that, I think, in their final comments, kind of as a matter of law. But particularly more recently, we've had a couple meetings, again, with our most immediate neighbors, and we have agreed to some additional requests that they've made. One of them, and I don't know if we need to put the site plan back up, but there was a trash enclosure at the far eastern, southeastern edge of the site. Am I getting my, yes? No, southwestern, thank you. Turned around. Which was going to immediately about some of the single-family homes. And we had to work with ecology and radiuses for trucks, but we've now figured out a way to move it all the way across the site, near the dog park, far as possible distance from any of the existing homes. There were concerns that our building new fences on our side of the property line wouldn't be enough, and so, or it could cause damage. We've agreed that if neighbors want it, we will replace all the fencing along the line. And there was a request, somewhat unique, although Ron informed me that something similar had been done on Bay Meadows in the context of, I believe it was the adjacent Fiesta Gardens neighborhood. We have agreed to pay for structural reports for all of those neighbors' homes, so they have a baseline to understand whether or not indeed our construction causes any damage. Perhaps most importantly, although it's kind of the softest of commitments, but in my experience, is the most important, so we've said, we are ready, willing, and able to engage in an ongoing dialogue that will continue all the way through construction. There were, in our last meeting Friday night, a whole host of issues that neighbors raised that we couldn't say, yeah, we can do it. We don't know if they're feasible, but we said, absolutely, we'll look at it, we'll sit down with you, we'll talk it through. And I would expect throughout this entire process, all the way through construction, that we're committed to doing that process. I hope you can see, we have really tried to do right here. We do believe this is both a terrific and a unique project, and we hope that you'll recommend it to the City Council for approval. Thank you, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? We can wait.
I had a question for Mr. Cohen. With regard to the 190 total units, and 19 of those are affordable, permanent affordable?
Correct.
How will the 19 units be allocated amongst the mix of the single-family dwellings, row homes, townhomes, stacked flats? What's the plan on that?
I have no idea, but it sounds like Nick Krokowski. Do you want to step up, if you know the answer? Perhaps Lilly does. I don't know the answer.
Yeah. Hi, Nick Krokowski, I'm with Strata. The units are allocated equally on a percentage basis by bedroom count throughout the site.
Okay. I'm sorry, one other question, Mr. Cohen. The one comment that I do recall from May, from the May study session, was the question, and it's the one, the one comment that I didn't, I didn't see a change in the layout, was it was the concept of, so there's a community benefit here to provide a dog park that's accessible to the community, but the location of it is in the far northwestern edge of the property, farthest away from all of the neighborhoods. And so my question was, was there consideration around making it in a location that is more accessible, or have you found that the community liked the idea that it was kind of set back there along that path?
Well, really, the only place to put the dog park is on the creek trail.
Right.
The biggest debate we had, and you're right, we did talk about this at the May study session, was should it be at the beginning of the trail or at the end? And the rationale for putting it to the end is that trail can be a nice amenity, but it's not really long enough to go on much of a run, and these outlooks are going to be nice. So we were trying to create an amenity which would draw people and create traffic, and people would be exposed to the creek trail. So we think it's the right place. It just kind of creates the kind of flow that you want. We want to draw people, if you have the land plan in your mind, both in that way, and then we want to draw people across the site as well, which is why we have that wide swath of green space. So that was the rationale. We would be happy to move it. I personally believe, and we have our landscape architects from CMG are here, I think the consensus was that was the best place to put it.
Okay. My last question, before we get to the next section. I noticed in the Cannon Design Group October letter, that there were several items that Mr. Cannon had highlighted around the setbacks for the third and four, the three and four-story buildings.
The ones in the middle, the middle of the site.
That's right. And then also the transition of floors, more than one story. Is the, is the layout, the way that you've designed it right now or put forth, is that, is that in any way a consequence of the fact that you have made the single-family dwellings to align the south and eastern property lines to minimize the impact? Is that why?
It was a big factor, and I mean, it's interesting. You look at the land plan, and it looks pretty simple. There's so many, even moving that traction closure was hard, like just when you get in the turning radiuses and street widths. So there were a number of factors. That was very much one of them. And again, I'm not sure if this is perfectly responsive to your question, but the reason that we were sort of self-imposing this R1 zoning around the edge was because smaller lots, less density, better transition, better edge neighbors to the existing homes. I've got our project architect here, if that wasn't a specific enough answer for you.
Good evening. Padraig King with Dolan Architecture and Planning. I think Michael captured, in essence, the question and providing the answer, but in addition to that, I think what I'd like to also say is, what we're comfortable with is the transition based on its new, single-family detached. The transition itself is going from a two-story, and then, most cases here, as we have in the site plan, we're 50-plus feet at the closest point before we even start the block building. That's, you know, technically a three-story profile with a fourth-level pop-up. And then the 12-unit building, we did push the sides in a little bit. We organized the end elevation. But if you think about it, our condition, building the building between the 12-unit buildings is actually less than 50 feet. So, and also a wider front. So the fact that we're siding on to the single-family detached, we feel appropriate for it.
Okay. Those are my, that was my question, too.
Okay. So we'll move now to the public comment period. Do we have speaker slips? And if so, how many?
Yes, Chair, I have 14 speaker slips.
Okay. What's the will of the commission?
With regards to...
With the time limit?
I'd like to share their opinions, but, you're the Chair.
Excuse me, Chair, we now have 17.
17. 18. Okay, we're going to... We're going to use the timer tonight, and we're going to limit each speaker to three We don't want to be here till midnight. Okay, if you could call the first speaker, please?
First speaker, Alejandro Bustamante, followed by Sheila Liano-Samora.
Three minutes?
Yes, and if you could set the timer, please? Thank you.
I have problems talking slowly. I wonder how I'm going to do, speaking fast. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing the neighbors from Edren Avenue, Holland Street, and South Norfolk Street to express our concerns about this beautiful project, unfortunately is right next to our houses. My name is Alejandro Bustamante. I'm with 1367 Edren Avenue. 1367 Edren Avenue was one of my options 16 years ago, when I was ready to buy a house. It was not the cheapest option, actually. It was a little bit above my budget. But I want to see the house anyway. So the real estate lady showed me the house. It was okay, I mean, the house. And we went to the backyard, and that was the selling point. There is a beautiful tree, huge, beautiful tree, right next to the fence. Those kind of trees that takes probably 50, 80, or 100 years to grow. And there is an office building 100 feet away from the fence. I can see the building, I can see the people working, but at least between my house and the building, you know, 100 feet, it's okay. The lady, the real estate lady said, you know, did you notice there is no houses behind you? "Yes, I did," I say, "and that's wonderful." And say, "There's no houses now, and chances are, it will never be, because it's a E1 zoning in the city map." At that moment, I just made my mind, and say, "I'm going to make any sacrifice to buy this house." I readjust my budget, and I bought the house. The next year, I was eating instant noodle soups, but that was okay. I got the house. Now, with regard, with regard to this project, the water park complex, I have two questions. And I'm going to touch, I'm going to touch only two subjects, because three minutes is not a lot. The first one, my first question... The first one, my first question is, what's the reasoning behind the approval for cutting trees that take so long to grow and cast a decent shadow, provide privacy, protection against wind and the sun, and then plant little sticks?
Could you please start to wrap up? You've exceeded your three minutes. Tell us what your second comment was.
Okay, well, that was-
Second question.
The second is, with what criteria the city may approve a project that will place two-story houses next to the, next to a few feet from, from one-story house?
Okay, thank you. We've got your comments. I'm sorry, three minutes.
Okay.
Next speaker?
Sheila Faliano-Samora, followed by Scott Lombardi.
Hello, my name is Sheila Faliano-Samora. I live at 1335 Adrian Avenue with my husband and my two children, ages nine and six. My property is located right alongside the southern property line of the Waters Park Office Buildings. We purchased our home in 2010 when our son was one. We wanted to put down roots for our family in a neighborhood that was safe, close to friends and family, and wasn't busy, mostly local traffic. Some of the main selling features of the location of our home was that we were, there were no neighbors behind us. And that was assured to us by our real estate agent, that it was an E1 zoned for commercial use only. There could never be residentials put behind us. Fast forward to nine years later, and I'm sad to say it has completely changed, and not for the better. I would like to give you my personal firsthand experience of the current traffic situation, not a traffic report, based on questionable data, which has already taken over my neighborhood for the worse. For those of you who currently have children of school age or have been through it, know the struggle it can be to actually get your children out the door. On top of that, having to add 15 to 20 minutes sometimes, even 25 minutes on top of that, what should only take 10 to 15 minutes to drive at a very most, can turn already hectic morning to complete chaos. To leave my neighborhood to get my children to school, I must make a left onto Norfolk at the intersection of South Norfolk and Zero Avenue. The amount of traffic going northbound at this time is overwhelming on average. There are 20 to 25 cars in line to pass through the stop sign at Day Avenue in South Norfolk. Trying to merge onto this traffic on a daily basis is stressful and frustrating as it is. At times, I am forced to find alternative routes to be able to get my children to school on time. Once I get through this obstacle, I am then presented with the traffic at Fashion Island Boulevard, the four-way intersection. This already adds a great deal of stress and anxiety to my already hectic mornings, and at this point, I haven't even left my neighborhood to get my children to school. If the proposed project is passed, there will also have to be traffic accounted for leaving the Waters Complex at this time, going the same direction the majority of traffic goes, to either get their children to the local schools in the area or to the freeway onramps. Currently, most of the traffic going to the Waters Park is going opposite of the traffic coming from the north, turning into the complex from the freeway. I'm very concerned what is already a horrific traffic situation will become an epidemic once we have more units with families to account for in the area. Both of my children have special needs, which in itself can be a daily struggle to make sure that they're receiving the best care they deserve. They each require therapy sessions several times a week that have been deemed medically necessary to assist in their development. I have already had to relocate my son from a therapist who was in a further-away town while they were wonderful and fulfilled his needs, because the distance was much too far and just added that much more disruption to our already stressful day, and had negative effects on my children's well-being. I have had to make arrangements for both of my children to be taken out of school so that I can take them to their therapies at least once a week on off-peak hours, so we have less of a traffic disturbance. Because if you have a special needs child, you know how important it is to have consistency and the support they so desperately need. Unfortunately, due to this, they have to miss important material during the time that they give to subjects in school. If this project is passed with the proposed 190 units, what will the intersection of Waters Park, Drive, Bud Court, and South Norfolk look like to the traffic that has already exited on Norfolk? In addition to the current situation, they have additional changes at the light at Hillsdale and South Norfolk that has been set on a new timer, and the time of the light turns green to the left on Norfolk. There are 40 to 50 cars lined up.
Can you please wrap up?
Additionally, with the new light structure that has been implemented at Hillsdale Boulevard and Shell, with the no-left turn between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m., what is it going to make the already 40 to 50 cars turning left onto Norfolk look like in the future?
Thank you.
Scott Lombardi, followed by Vincent Garibaldi.
Thank you. Through the Chair of the Commission, my name is Scott Lombardi, and I live at 2304 Elliott Street with my wife, Susie, and my two daughters for over 23 years. I am here today to speak in the concern, as a concerned property owner and a member of the neighborhood community which may be impacted by Waters Park project. My hope is that the members of this commission will listen to the concerns raised today from the neighbors and the property owners, and that you will do your due diligence to investigate, compromise, and mitigate the impacts to these concerned residents of City of San Mateo. Please understand that emotions are running high since many of us have invested, spent life savings in our properties, and never expected that our quality of life, privacy, possible loss of value of our homes would be at the discretion of a development and the City of San Mateo. How many people can you jam in an area without compromising the quality of life, traffic gridlock, and the safety of the public? Is this even a concern to the city? One would have to ask that question. Where is the common sense for all the development 1.2 miles of this project? I would ask a question of the Commission and the elected representatives of the City of San Mateo. Have you ever visited the proposed site? Before you rubber stamp this project, please take the time to visit the site and drive around the neighbors' fences to see how inconsistent the grade heights are that allows you to look directly into these residences' homes without even getting out of a car. I guarantee that if you owned one of these houses, you would be furious, knowing that you're going to have a two-story building looking into your house. Many of the homeowners you will hear from never thought that they would be purchasing their homes and would never be able to open their northern-facing windows, or in similar cases, on Norfolk Street, on their western side of their homes, compromised due to privacy being invaded by towering buildings. When I asked the city about privacy, the response was it's a zone for two-story. How many of us purchase our homes knowing that only the development of Waters Park property would be a commercial with setbacks from the residences? Moving forward, a subsequent meeting with the development developer did not include one of the city representatives. It appears that the developer speaks for the city through stating it's going to happen. This is not a productive or an engaging way to start a meeting. You can imagine after that emotion started flowing. I would have to say at the end of that meeting, it got a little bit better. Where is the compassion, respect, and the representation for the taxpayers and the residents of City of San Mateo? Privacy issues, as we have been told, will be addressed by vegetation and trees. As a resident for over 23 years, I had to deal with root inundation issues in the original sewer line in the manhole in my backyard at the cost of a 40-year-old black walnut tree that was ripped out by the city and not replaced. We fully understand what roots do to the system. So I, I propose the solution, so the proposed solution to the privacy in this development is to plant more vegetation and trees, so the roots will infiltrate an antiquated sewer line.
Can you please wrap up your remarks?
And the trees, then the crowns of the trees will go into the power lines, and we know how that has worked out for California with the fires that we have had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have, we have your written script, so we can finish reading it.
And you're welcome to respond back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Vincent Garibaldi, followed by Rick Sakuna.
Dear Planning Commission, my name is Vince Garibaldi. I've lived in San Mateo my entire life. My wife, Kristy, and I are new homeowners at 2315 Holland Street in San Mateo. We bought our house in April 2018. My neighbors and I are here this evening to bring to your attention many issues we see, which we believe will be created by the development of One Waters Park Properties. Specifically, I'm here to discuss automotive traffic and complications/problems which will spawn from yet another development in a very small radius of other major housing developments. I have a list of points/questions which I would like to read to you for your, for you to take into consideration as you pass preliminary and final judgment on the approval of the proposed development of One Waters Park. As to make sure I'm not fibbing about the desperate state of traffic affairs, which we feel will be amplified by yet another housing project, I invite any one of you to join me for a morning or evening commute into or out of the Lake Shore neighborhood. If you sat with me for a commute, I think you would see the gravity of the situation we taxpaying citizens of Lake Shore and Shoreview face on a daily basis. One, what is the city's plan to mitigate the overflow of traffic that we will undoubtedly experience along Norfolk from Foster City, making left-hand turns illegal from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Shell Boulevard and Foster City Boulevard as to stop commuters who try to cut off 92 East Bounty Entry Ramp traffic? Has the city realized that, has the city realized and considered that perhaps with the approval of the following developments, we may already have enough housing and added traffic? Those developments being Concorde Rite Aid Property, 961 units, 1650 South Delaware, 73 units, Bay Meadows Phase 2, 1,250 units, 2775 South Delaware, 68 units, Hillsdale Terrace, 68 units, 2940 South Norfolk, not a permanent residence but a hotel complex, and the freshly completed Station Park Green with 599 units. How do you plan to make sure that the residents living on Norfolk have a way to safely enter or exit the driveway slash streets during peak commute times, as they are presently abused by other motorists for simply trying to leave or get to their homes? Is there a plan to expand civil services such as police, paramedic, and fire services to other locations within our neighborhoods, because with the density of traffic as is, emergency civil services cannot get to the scene of the situation in a timely manner? Let alone adding another development of housing? My neighbors and I have done some calculations, and based off all proposed and/or approved projects, you would be adding in the neighborhood of 3,500 housing units. From our conservative estimation, that means that another 5,000 to 7,000 people and somewhere between 7,000-plus cars, all within a 1.8-mile radius. We urge you to strongly consider not rubber stamping this project. Someone has stated we are in a housing crisis in the Bay Area, as there are people who need homes but can't find them. With the developments that are already approved, why don't we see if those units fill up before adding more? As far as I can tell, the quality of life of the citizens and taxpayers of San Mateo, and especially those in the Lake Shore and Shoreview neighborhoods, are continuing to be degraded by further development. We also bought our homes and residences here because of the feel of the neighborhood. The potential citizens of San Mateo's needs do not outweigh the needs of the actual citizens of San Mateo. We bought homes here because of the peace and solidarity of San Mateo. If I wanted to live in Los Angeles, I would have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Rick Sakuna, and followed by Gural Dhillon.
Good evening, Rick Sakuna. I live across the street from the project at 2101 South Norfolk. As a longtime resident, 25 years, and one of the founders of the Marina Lagoon Action Committee, I've been privileged to be deeply involved in many critical issues that have affected our city. I was part of the committee that studied and supported the Bay Meadows development, and most recently, I was the treasurer of Yes on Measure S, which raised sales tax money for our general fund. I'm also a CPA and worked on real estate projects, and I was also a construction contractor and worked on many large projects, as large as 10,000 homes in the East Bay. So I have a pretty good feel for projects and what they bring and the detriment that they can cause. After studying the presentations, I went to three of the community meetings. I've met with the developers and asked them questions. I would like to support this project. I feel that it is a unicorn where we can reduce our traffic load. And I've seen projects where, or actually, in this particular project, it's about 35% leased, I believe. Living across the street, I walk through there every day. And I think if this project does not go through, the duty of the property owners would be to lease that property out 100%, or to sell it off and bring another property in, and we're going to go through this all over again. And I doubt that that second property that's proposed will be better than this one. So looking at all the attributes which you've seen, I think that they've checked all the boxes. I think that this is a good project. And when I look at this, I personally have to step back and say, is this project good for my city? Yes. Is this project good for my community? Yes. Is the project good for me, living across the street? Probably not. In the short term, I am going to be affected. I'm going to get the dust, I'm going to get the noise, I'm going to get the, I have to monitor the stormwater runoff, because I'm responsible for the Marina Lagoon. I'm going to get the traffic. And like I said, in the short term, it will affect me, but for the greater good of our community, I think this is a project that will benefit us all, like the idea of the 19 affordable housing units. And I would ask if that could be set aside for preference to our city workers. If they could move into those units, that would be, if there's a way to work that out, that would be great. And I said, I think that overall, this is a good project for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gural, Gural Dhillon, followed by Christina Fernandez.
My name's Gural Dhillon. I live on 2322 South Norfolk Street. I'm here in regards to the, like the developer is saying, that 190 units, each unit will have at least two cars. I mean, there is already 380 cars in that complex. And they are trying to say that only 56 will go, come out, and 60 will go in. That's not possible. I'm not blind. I live, I've been living on that street for the last 24 years. I'm at to a point that I can't even get out my driveway without people showing me fingers when I'm taking my kids to the school every morning. That's disgusting, and I feel very bad that I live on that street. This is going to be continuing all the way. It's not going to stop at all. I mean, right now, when the people leave from San Mateo going to 101, south or north, we have to wait for at least like two or three traffic lines to get on the freeways, either way, either on Hillsdale or on Fashion Island Boulevard. They are going to be developing, they will be spending all the money they want to do it. They can have all the measurements, all the studies, and all the things in front of you. But at the end of the day, the quality of life of people who live there and have invested their time and money in there, those are the ones who are going to be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Christina Fernandez, followed by Allison Arnold.
Good evening, Chair Whitaker and Commissioners. My name is Christina Fernandez, and I'm a Senior Policy Associate for SAMCDA, or the San Mateo County Economic Development Association. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we urge your support of the Waters Project, as it meets many of our region's goals, including creating housing at all income levels and reducing traffic. We understand that there have been some neighborhood concerns regarding timely noticing, traffic, privacy, and construction impacts. STRATA Investment Group is committed to an open and sincere dialogue with the neighbors, hence the postponement of the hearing by two weeks. Evidence points to voluntary supplemental neighborhood meetings exceeding the boundaries of the city's noticing requirement. In addition, the Waters Project has gone above and beyond legal requirements in addressing neighborhood concerns, not only designing a project that allows for taller buildings in the center of the site as to respect the privacy of adjacent neighbors, but also making a $250,000 investment to improve an intersection which has no nexus to the project. The Waters Park Project is a rare opportunity for the City of San Mateo to meet 6% of its RENA goals, while providing a diverse income mix and reducing traffic. In case you missed it in the paper this weekend, Governor Newsom has proposed tying SB1, our gas tax revenues, to a city's, to cities fulfilling its RENA requirements. STRATA Investment Group has proven to be a good faith partner throughout this process, and we urge your support of the Waters Park Project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Allison Arnold, followed by Jacob Adiarte.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. My name is Allison Arnold. I work in tandem with the project sponsors. I wanted to make you aware of several letters of support that have been submitted to you in advance of tonight's hearing. One from our friends at the Local Carpenters Union, the Housing Leadership Council, the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, Commute.org, and SAMCDA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob Adiarte, followed by Ross DeSalz.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Jacob Adiarte, Lead Field Representative for the Carpenters Union, Local 217, representing approximately 38,000 men and women here in Northern California, many of which live in the city and county of San Mateo, and will have an opportunity to work on this project. We're here to speak in support of a smart and thoughtful development at the Water Technology Park. I'd like to commend the staff working in conjunction with the developer on developing and designing a well-thoughtful project which achieves two of San Mateo's most pressing policy goals: build more housing and reduce traffic. Waters Park replaces a 1970's office park with a much-needed 190 residential homes, while producing peak traffic by approximately 50% relative to existing office use. These 190 residential homes will bring together a diverse range of new homeowners: new and growing families, first-time homebuyers, seniors, and lower-income families. Containing 2.3 acres of publicly accessible open space, this transit-oriented development is sure to activate the new community and enhance the surrounding area. Not to echo the developer, but I think it's important to mention that they took the feedback from the neighborhood and made sure that- from the neighborhood and made sure that committing 250,000 goes to improving the intersection of 19th Avenue and Norfolk, in addition to dedicating that 10% of affordable housing of 80% AMI. Presenting itself, I would say, as a rare opportunity to own some affordable housing here in the city and county of San Mateo. As far as labor, Strata remains and continues to be a strong partner with the Carpenters Union, not only on this development, across all developments. Creating head-of-household jobs provide health benefits for the whole family and a career pathway for new apprentices, women, men, minorities, and veterans looking to start a career in construction. Strata is an organized, ethical, and efficient organization that honors its commitments to labor and the community. The Carpenters Union fully supports the Waters Park development and urge you to move it to the City Council for approval. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Ross DeSalz, followed by Michael and Teresa Burke.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I'm not going to have a, as an organizer of a speech here, but just from a perspective on the other side, as a homeowner, one of the fence-line neighbors at 2108 South Norfolk, also a construction worker, union plumber, some of my brothers here in the audience are looking for work, and I don't blame them for supporting this project, but as a homeowner and a construction worker, you can say all you want that there's requirements and there's air, you know, there's going to be procedures to limit dust and air quality. They don't get followed, they don't get enforced. There's very little enforcement on job sites. I can't speak for every project. I haven't worked on a project, but when you tell someone they have to sweep using a sawdust or spray stuff down, and it doesn't get done, no one gets in trouble. No one goes home. No one loses money. It gets mentioned, but things don't get brought up. Contractors are more concerned about graffiti and outhouses than they are with actual safety requirements, actually impacts the neighborhood, leaving trash in parking lots. If anybody's parking on the street from this project, people take their tools home, there will be screws and nails in the street, tires will get flat, and there will be excessive garbage spewing out of vehicles second parked on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael and Teresa Burke, followed by Carolyn DeLaPeña.
My husband and I live at 2422 Elliott Street and have been there for about 11 years. I can tell you that our hugest concern is the traffic. It has been, over the last four years, continually getting so much worse in that area where we can, without a light at our intersection on Flint and South Norfolk, it takes us, it can take up to 10 minutes just to make a left turn out of that neighborhood. And I can't see how 190 units, assuming that there's going to be at least two people per unit, that have to go the direction that we're going, not going into the park, as one of our neighbors had pointed out, and again, in the evening, will be coming home to those in that direction. I can't see how that's going to be 50 or 60 cars. It just doesn't seem like real math. So we're very concerned about the traffic impact in that area, and it's not just so much that area as it is, we're looking at this one project, but the city needs to look at all these other projects that are being, that have either been done and the additional nine projects that have been pre-approved in less than a two-mile radius. So we're very concerned. It's not just this, but this is definitely a piece of the pie. So we're worried about things to come, and this is just part of it.
I only have actually one question. Do any of you live on the east side of 101?
Has anyone ever?
Has any, do any of you have, do you live on the east side of 101, on Norfolk Street or over in the Soundwall area?
Because we would invite you to please.
Stop by there at 7:30 in the morning and see if you can even get out of that street.
Or come back home.
And just a question for Hexon over here, or Hexagon there. When you say AM or?
Please, sir, please address the Commission and then we'll.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just a question for the traffic consultant.
Sure.
And it says AM or PM that they did their traffic study. Now, was that 6:00 AM or was that 8:00 PM or was that during actual peak hours?
We'll have them answer that question for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carolyn DeLaPeña, followed by Andrew Lumano.
I said I wanted to go last.
I'm sorry, I'm, we're asking, would you please come up at this time?
No, I want them to take. Just, just. Oh, my God. I'm sorry.
We'll work it out.
Andrew, Mr. Lumano, would you please come up?
Thank you, Chairman Whitaker and Commissioners. I appreciate you holding this meeting. I just wanted to let you know that I'm a resident of Parkside area, and since 2006, I do experience that heavy traffic, but I also work in real estate and I sell homes here, and we do need housing. I would much rather see a nicely, well-planned community in our neighborhood rather than an office park that's going to draw excessive amounts of cars. I think we really need to look at the situation on 19th Avenue, though, and really appreciate the Strata's offer to chip into this effort. We've got a big median there that just needs to be taken out. We need to look at traffic flow, two lanes right onto Norfolk, two lanes left onto Norfolk, and mitigate some of the traffic trying to get on 92 East. These people that I represent in buying their homes here, their average day need to go down to San Jose just today. They can't afford a home here. So having affordable housing and having it done in a thought-out way, where Strata's been very articulate in trying to bring the community around, how do we do this and do it right? So that, you know, the homes that border Bay Meadows, they should be benefiting from the Bay Meadows development because they've got something bigger, they've got a larger footprint on their yard, and because of these new people coming in and our values going up, their values are going to increase too. But it is a quality-of-life issue probably anchored by that commute because it's very dense in there. So taking a look at that as well as providing the housing instead of additional business here, I think is a good move, and I think Strata's got a great start to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee Thierry, followed by Carol Maldonado, please.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Renee Thierry Jones. You all received a letter by email from me and my husband today. Renee, I'm Marty Jones, and I appreciate your response. I'm a 15-year resident at 2309 David Court on the corner of Adrian Street. And regarding the traffic lessening, I too am confused as Vice Chair Mike Etheridge. At minimum, two cars will exit onto Norfolk each morning. That's two cars times the 190 unit proposed totaling 380 cars. Those cars will be leaving to go to work the same time as I do, where they will be presented with gridlocked traffic on Norfolk Street. Currently, the business park traffic represents actually a reverse commute. When we are leaving, our residents to leave, they are coming in the opposite direction and going into the parking lot. They have posed no problems all of these years. In the afternoons, when we are fighting to get off at the Mariners Point exit, to get onto 19th, to then fight to make a right turn onto Norfolk, all of the business park cars are leaving out of the business park and coming out. They have not contributed to the traffic, but the new residences that are being proposed, they're going to be experiencing that traffic. And I believe the Hexagon study is based on statistics and not real true data. It is an apples-to-oranges comparison. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carol Maldonado, followed by Evan Adams, please.
Hi, my name is Carol Maldonado. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I live on Norfolk and Day Avenue. I purchased a home there six years ago, and so I'm very familiar with the Fashion Island exit, which in 2013 used to take me 15 minutes to get from the exit, half a mile to Day Avenue. Now it takes me 45 minutes on usual day, and on Fridays, it can be up to an hour, or I exit Concorde instead and go all the way around. So I really, you know, ask for your consideration as a Commission, and again, as others have reiterated, not only for the traffic impact on this particular project, which I agree is a very nice project. I am very skeptical about the claims for traffic reduction, given that the TAP report in 2015, which Public Works has, had published, then had identified 92 and 101 as a significant impact due to the economy being better, and also in 2016, I'm sorry, the 2017 Traffic Advisory Plan also still has no improvement plans for anything east of 101. So I'm still very concerned about just long-term how that's going to improve any traffic. Right now, there's two bottlenecks which we all are very familiar with: Fashion Island and Hillsdale. It really takes me 45 minutes, at least an hour. I'm also concerned about the tree and avian life. As they mentioned in the Strata, there's 22 species of trees. If those trees are currently in poor or fair condition in the last two years, why have they waited this long to address that concern? So I have, again, some skepticism on the trees and how much that will impact the avian life or the birds, especially in the lagoon. I see them every day. I see there's at least six bird, different types of birds every day. They're throughout the lagoon at different times of the day. So I really feel that that environmental impact has really been very minimal and is only being addressed to hit the minimum mark, especially with the concern of the boreal creek, the runoff, and the construction. I'm also concerned about the water. The Marina Lagoon has always had some history with bacteria, which is natural, but with contamination, I'm really also very concerned about that. So I really ask you not to only help check the standards for any requirements, but also set new standards. We are a very educated and very innovative area. And also with teachers, I ask you to consider their housing as well with this, minimum 20%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan Adams, followed by Christopher Lusardi, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to, in support of this project. I live about two miles from this project. I've grown up, I grew up in San Mateo, and I took Caltrain throughout high school down to Ballarat. Currently, I spend pre-tax about $120,000 a year in rent, pre-tax. My landlord pays $2,000 a year in property tax. I would love for the opportunity to buy into this project, pay my property tax, and not send tens of thousands of dollars out of state every single month while I'm a drain on your system. This project is excellent. I think it maintains an architectural aesthetic. It transfers from the single-family homes to two-story homes to a central core, and that's beautiful. Dalen Group, I'm an architectural, I'm an architectural products rep. Dalen Group does an excellent job in integrating these sort of projects into communities. It is consistent with the area, and often it becomes a spur for growth and a spur for rejuvenation in a community. My father grew up in West San Francisco. At that time, there were pig farms in West San Francisco. Silicon Valley used to be full of fruit orchards. Now it's not. This is progress. This is homes. Homes are good progress. The carpenters agreement, that's a great item of this project. There was recently a study that was put out that residential contractors make about 25% of what commercial contractors make. If you look at those guys in those vests and you look at the logos on them, those are all commercial logos because they make more money on it. By doing this project, you're getting union-paid people working on residential projects, and you're encouraging good-paying jobs throughout the residential industry in our neighborhood. The environmental aspects of this project. This project activates Burrell Creek. That's excellent. Rather than a parking lot, you're getting a nice trail on Burrell Creek and you're getting a dog park. New building is a better control of sound, so they can, new building will, new building, new building structures have less sound impact into the building than old buildings. So for 101, those kids and those people are going to have a healthier lifestyle. Also, there's a community garden in this project, a great skill, a great education for children. Finally, traffic. We all deal with traffic. I sit in the Hillsdale traffic every day. It's a huge pain. However, Foster City is doing something about it. They're going to cut off left turns. That will improve the traffic structure on these roads.
Please, respect everyone in the chambers tonight, and we don't allow clapping, cheering, jeering, or anything like that. And it slows down the process, and we need to respect all of our speakers.
Because I'm in the red, I'll just, one last point regarding the traffic. I'm sorry, lost my train of thought now. Right. That will be improved along with the fact that people like me, I work from home, I don't drive in and out. I'd love to be in a project like this, and I'd love for my kid to take the shuttle to Caltrain to high school someday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Lusardi, followed by Leora Ross.
My wife and I live on Claudia Avenue. I wasn't even planning on speaking tonight, so I just jotted this down in the back. The traffic issue's been brought up many times now, and I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points. The traffic numbers to me seem flat-out misleading. The total number of trips is meaningless to the local residents. One trip saved in the opposite direction of the rest of us doesn't help us at all. The number of trips out in the morning and in in the evening are what matter, and they clearly will increase with this development. I did the math using the numbers provided in the report, and the number of trips in the direction of the residents commute will increase two to three times based on the numbers in the report. That's 59 minus 20 divided by 20, and 61 minus 17 divided by 17. That's 195% increase and a 259% increase based on what's currently happening now. No matter how many people occupy a business park, the total trips in the direction the rest of us are typically driving will never be greater. On the contrary, although residential communities have less people overall, they will all be coming and going when we are. The traffic study completely ignores that, and, you know, reverse commuters don't, they just don't affect us as much. I'd also like to point out the fact that a blanket R3 zoning for the entire property could allow for single-family homes to be replaced in the future with more dense housing, and is already in this plan, allowing a reduction in setbacks. So that's also something to consider. Lastly, I'd like to mention that many of the positive aspects for this job, like construction jobs for the union workers, the trail, the dog park, and many other of the positive aspects, could be included in a business development rather than a residential development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leora Ross, followed by Thomas Heizer.
Good evening. My name is Leora Tanwak Ross. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality affordable homes. As you probably guessed, I'm here to speak in support of this proposal. We did a, we released a report recently that said that throughout the county of San Mateo, we have created 19 jobs for every one housing unit, and that means that when people that work here are trying to find a place to live, they're competing with 18 other people to try and get a house. And our offices are on El Camino by the Michaels in San Mateo, and every day, we have five or six people who come in and beg us for housing. The housing shortage is so acute, and today, tonight, people are sleeping in their cars, they're sleeping, you know, in living rooms, in overcrowded situations, and we really living rooms, in overcrowded situations, and we really, really need more housing, particularly more affordable housing. And this proposal includes 19 affordable homes, and it's a really great opportunity because those for-sale homes are hard to come by and hard to build. So please approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thomas Heiser, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'd like to start by saying that I'm, in particular, very happy to see that there are affordable homes for families in this project. I'll refer back to two weeks ago when the commission heard the development, the mixed-use development that's going in across from Caltrain at the current, side of the current Trag grocery store. And one of the comments then was, there are a lot of studio affordable units going in there. Where are the affordable houses for family? And the answer is, the affordable houses for families can be here at 123 Waters Park Drive. So I'm very pleased to see that. I'm very happy to see some of the concessions that the developers made as far as sustainability for this project. It's nice to see some of these steps that can be made to help reduce the global environmental impacts of San Mateo. But I also want to mention that I live east of 101 between Hillsdale and Fashion Island Boulevard, so I also understand some of the traffic issues that happen with traffic backing up on the 101-92 interchange, potentially people cutting through to get to the East Bay. I would just ask that the traffic is bad now, and that if people are concerned with the traffic, then we should be worrying about perhaps moving away from these automobile-oriented developments. We should be worried about ways we can try to improve non-automobile modes of transport, such as perhaps trying to improve bus service. Can we, the residents of San Mateo, work with Caltrans to try to get dedicated bus lanes across 92? These are all things that, we need the housing. The car issue should be tried to be separated from it. If people are potentially worried about parking spillover from this development, then we should be looking potentially into implementing a residential parking permit program in the neighborhood. And so I hope that this project won't be torpedoed over these potential traffic concerns. Potentially also, there could be improvements made to, again, non-automobile modes, so buses, walking, bicycling over Hillsdale and Fashion Island Boulevard. Also, for people who might be trying to bring their kids to school along Norfolk, I'd also hope that perhaps there could be consideration of, instead of a bike lane that's right next to the traffic lanes, we could move the parking away from the curb. We can make a parking-protected bike lane that would make it safer for children to bike to school. And so I just hope that, again, that the potential concerns for traffic won't torpedo this housing development that's sorely needed in San Mateo County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jordan Grimes, followed by Lorianna Diaz.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lifelong resident of the 19th Avenue Park neighborhood in San Mateo, and I'm here in support of the project as well. This is actually, there have been a few projects this year that I haven't liked all that much. This is sort of the opposite for me, because this is exactly, I think, what we need to be doing in every project in San Mateo. It has really great sustainability aspects, but it's also replacing a really old office park with housing. And I think right now, given the way our jobs-housing imbalance looks, we need to do absolutely everything we can, especially when a project like this comes up where you've got office space being replaced with housing to really jump on that. Also, like Thomas, I've been at hearings earlier this year when we've talked a lot about needing homes for families and not just studios and micro-studios and things like that, and I think this is a really great opportunity for it. I also want to mention that Bay Meadows right now has 40% of their residents using Caltrain. I think with the commute.org shuttles that service the area, I use one of those fairly frequently myself, as well as taking Samtrans, which is how I got here tonight. I think there will be a lot of people who, given the opportunity, will do that, especially younger people who won't necessarily use their cars. So anyway, I support the project, and I really hope that you guys will, we really badly need the housing, and I hope this is approved tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lorianna Diaz, followed by Carolyn De La Peña.
Good evening. My name's Lorianna Seja Diaz. I'm at 1327 Adrian Avenue. I lived in San Mateo for 40 years. So I've got Miranda with me. She is my four-year-old daughter, and you're probably asking why I'm torturing her tonight, because this is torture. And I'm going to tell you why I'm doing it. I'm holding her hostage. And you might ask yourself why? On March 3rd of 2016, my home was burglarized. And the way that I felt that night is being stuck in my home, waiting for police to arrive. I was being held hostage in my own home. And so I think Strata's beautiful, I think they've got a great concept, but I think the city of San Mateo has a bigger problem. And so we've got a huge traffic congestion. We're affecting our infrastructure. Are we dealing with increasing police? Has anybody thought about that? We're adding, how many people are we bringing into the city of San Mateo to live? Our police force, even this week, announced that they're having a huge amount of trouble keeping up with car abatement. Let's talk to them. Have they talked to you about the problems they have with burglaries? Because I can tell you what the sergeant told me. We feel really bad that you've lost everything. And it's, no, I haven't lost my sanity. Materialistic things come and go. But what I lost was my trust. If I'm living in San Mateo, a city that 20, 30, 40 years ago was nonexistent to the Bay Area, let's be honest with each other, nonexistent, nobody knew where San Mateo was. Let's ask ourselves tonight, why does everybody know where San Mateo is today? Because it's where everybody commutes out of the peninsula from. That is the only reason, and that's why we are beginning to be that target, or let me rephrase that, that's why we are the target. How many burglaries did we have this last week or so? 20 odd some burglaries, car break-ins? How many home burglaries do we have to have until we realize that there's a problem here? I was affected personally. Strata's not affecting me in that way. But where are my additional police force? Where's my additional fire people? I have children. My children have to go to private schools because there's no schools around me that fit my children's needs. What are we doing about public schools? I'm sorry, we have a whole lot of issues, and housing is one of them, but city of San Mateo, Diane, Mike, Ellen, you've got a bigger problem on your hand, and that's safety. Protect us. I live here, I'm a property owner, I'm paying already. I've grown up here, I've got loyalty to you. You have to protect your citizens first before worrying about how do I bring more people to live here? If you can't protect who's already here, then who are you protecting? Please think it through.
Thank you.
Carolyn De La Peña.
No, that's not allowed. Nice try, not allowed. I can't use her minutes?
Nope, nope. We're not trading, we're not trading time tonight.
I need about 10 minutes of your time, really. I can't use hers because she's not going to speak.
What's your names?
Carolyn De La Peña.
I'm not going to use all six minutes. I'm only quick so we get out of here. I'm the last one. Ron, you okay?
No, three minutes and that's it. I'm sorry, that's the rules.
If I don't want to speak, he can't take my time.
No, he can't.
Yeah, I was trying, before you started my time, I was trying to figure out how this worked because you guys were asking questions to the traffic consultant, and I wanted to know, I mean, sometime later on, can the public or the audience give you questions to ask the traffic consultant?
That's what this, that's what this time period is for.
But then, I've got other things with three minutes, I've got to go into asking the questions about the traffic consultant.
Are you going to use your three minutes or not?
Yeah, I'm getting ready to use it right now. I don't hear it.
Just to repeat, if you have questions for any of the consultants, ask the commission. We take notes, and then when we close the public comment period, we'll bring the consultants up to answer your questions.
Yeah, yeah, well, one of the questions, you can go ahead and start the time, because one of the questions was, my name is Vincent Fobbs, 1383 Adrian Avenue, and I gave you those diagrams because a neighbor of mine drew, made those. Chris did.
You need to speak in a microphone.
Would I be able to approach, because I want to show you guys something with this tape measure, based on that. Mike, will you hold it, please?
I just want to show you something. I'm going to walk out here. 13, 14, 15. That's Strata's back door of the property they're planning on building. This is my fence.
That's my fence.
This was my bedroom.
What's the measurement?
20 feet. 20 feet, two-story house. Raised it up, or let me get back.
Back to the microphone, please.
On a grade four feet higher than my property. My property actually sits lower than the proposed development. It's an office building, and we believe it was razed because of the creek for flooding. We don't know why it's razed, but it is razed. So those houses in that diagram Chris gave you, or Chris drew up, shows how those houses would be looking right into my house. We heard a lot about traffic tonight. I mean, there's really nothing much to say. I, I, I don't know how to put it any more different than all my neighbors have. All the development that the planning commission is proposing, and you've got traffic studies saying that they're going to reduce traffic? It's impossible. It's impossible. The problem is, you guys will go ahead, push this stuff through, and we're the ones that have to sit back and deal with it. We ask as citizens, taxpayers, that you really take in consideration us, the people. I respect what Strata does as far as giving jobs to construction workers. I really do. I'm in the union, like Ross is, there's a lot of us that live over there and in the union. And right now, there's plenty, plenty, plenty of work. Don't let that fool you. They'll be working, and they'll be working for a while. There's nothing wrong with them developing another commercial building, because we won't see that traffic, just like we haven't seen it. You can ask any of these neighbors here. We have not had a traffic problem from that office building. I've been living there since 97. Never. It's a reverse traffic flow. That's why we say the traffic, the traffic, that traffic thing is flawed and it's fake.
Okay.
No difference than what he put over.
Can you wrap up, please, your three minutes is up?
No, it's basically no different what they put over at Hillsdale Inn. Same company did it, pretty much almost the same traffic study. They're trying to tell us that there's not going to be a traffic problem.
Thank you.
Please take it in consideration.
We will, thank you. Do we have more speaker slips?
No, we do not.
Okay. Is there anyone still in the audience who would like to address the commission on this project?
Can I speak?
Yes, but you have three minutes.
Carolyn De La Peña.
Hi, I'm Carolyn De La Peña. I live at 2226 South Norfolk Street. I have lived in my house for 53 years. Never had an issue with traffic. Either way, going in or out, my concern is if there's a disaster or an emergency. There's one way into their proposal, and there's one way out. It's already backed up enough. How is any evacuation's going to get through there? And then our health. I know that there's quite a few of us in that neighborhood who are asthmatic, some more severe than others. I am very asthmatic. I cannot, I use my inhaler all the time. I don't need to worry about the dust, the rocks, the debris, anything floating around the air. But my biggest concern is emergency evacuations and the traffic, and I want to know how that's going to be addressed. And so we're asking you not to go along with this project because in 53 years living in that house, I love what I see in my backyard. You could put Google there, and we wouldn't have as much traffic as what they're proposing. So I appreciate you listening, but I'm hoping that you really do listen to the neighbors and what we stand for. The city's going to lose money on property taxes that would be paid as opposed to what they can make with a company being in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the audience who wants to address the commission? You can come to the microphone for your three minutes and fill out the yellow slip afterwards. Please give us your name.
Christina Cabrera. My parents live on Elliot Street. I've also been a lifelong San Mateo resident, and I now live in the San Mateo-Burlingame border, but every day, I travel to Elliot Street to drop off and pick up my daughter because my parents provide childcare before and after school. And I could attest to, all the residents are saying that the traffic is horrible. I have a 40-minute commute from where I live to get to my parents' house and back to work in Burlingame, and it's crazy in the afternoon hours because I can't get on 101 because of 92 traffic. I can't go on 19th Avenue. I can't go on East Hillsdale Boulevard, so I end up cutting through Shoreview, and I feel terrible for those residents because we get backed up there, and I have to drive all through Norfolk, and it's just a terrible situation. I would love to own a home in San Mateo. I would love to see myself be able to put roots here, but not at the expense of the residents that already live here. And I think that 19 affordable units is a drop in a bucket that really doesn't take into account the affordable units that we need in San Mateo County. And I would also say, what are we doing to build in other parts of San Mateo to disperse some of the traffic congestion that's already there? What land is available to the west side of El Camino to further expand housing in San Mateo, and not just in these areas where residents are already impacted with business traffic and residential traffic? So I'm here to just kind of share that perspective as a resident who doesn't, who does support affordable housing, but not this project the way that it's laid out right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment period, and there's a whole host of questions that we need answered that were raised by the public. Lily, were you taking notes?
There was one question about emergency evacuations, and this project has been reviewed by both the fire and police departments. As I mentioned, there is one way in and out of South Norfolk. However, there is another, there's an EV lane that connects to the adjacent properties, which also provides emergency vehicle access to the site.
What's the name of that lane?
It's an emergency vehicle access lane that is connected to the adjacent site across the creek.
Across the creek.
And fire and PD have reviewed the project and have deemed that it's sufficient for their access.
One thing that I would add in terms of review by public services, not only has it been reviewed by the Development Review Board, which includes police and fire, but you'll notice in the conditions of approval that are a number of conditions of approval that are entitled police, entitled fire, so those conditions of approval have been imposed by them based upon their review of the project plans.
Thank you.
And then there was a question for Hexagon about when the actual counts were taken. And then there was a question for Hexagon about when the actual counts were taken during the AM and PM hours. And then there were a lot of.
Let's stop there and have Gary Black come up from Hexagon and answer the questions regarding traffic counts.
Yes, Gary Black again. The traffic counts were taken from seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon, which is typically when we do our traffic studies, which are the typical commute hours in San Mateo. I might stand here, there's probably other traffic questions, so I don't get up and sit down and get up again. Are there any others you want me to address?
I don't see any. There were a bunch of questions from Vince Geraldi that I wasn't able to, I couldn't write that fast.
If, if I could, if I may, I think one of the consistent questions, which I also have, is that, again, it's the concept of, your report has a trip count. And you have a trip count in and out, and it's a pretty low number during peak hours, and that's statistically sound according to you. But how does the, how does the fact that it's an office park with people going in during the morning peak hours and going out during the peak hours? How does this traffic report specifically associate that circumstance to this development?
Yeah, that's a good question. And let me also state, I think, I maybe didn't give a complete answer to your earlier question about why is it only, you know, 60, well, 59 cars that are leaving in an hour? That's just in one hour. So typically, we find that in these types of developments, the cars will leave over a five-hour period and probably come back over a five-hour period. So that 59 is just for the one hour, the one highest hour. But it's not to say that there wouldn't, there would be only, you know, 59 people that would work at this project, for example. So, and then, yes, the study does specifically address the question about directionality, which is in fact why the traffic study was even done. We don't normally do traffic studies for projects that reduce the amount of traffic, but we recognize that in this case, there's the directionality issue that a lot of speakers brought up. This project would add traffic in what we call the peak direction and reduce the traffic in what we call the off-peak direction. But the impact of that is, is pretty complicated. It's not as simple to say that we don't, that the off-peak direction doesn't even matter. It does matter because we analyze intersections and their operation, and traffic going in the opposite direction has an impact as well as the traffic that's going in the peak direction. So it's rather, it's, it's pretty complicated, and our traffic study does go into all those details and analyzes specific intersections. And we do, if you, if you take a close look at the traffic study, you'll see that we characterize that area as being very congested. So all the testimony that we heard from the, from the residents is true and is reflected in the traffic study. It's a very congested area. However, our conclusions are that this project wouldn't make it any worse because the traffic that would be added in the peak direction would be offset by the reduction in the, in the off-peak direction. As I said, each individual intersection gets calculated separately, becomes a little complicated, but the overall answer is that we wouldn't expect the conditions to change from what you see out there today with this project.
If I can amplify on Mr. Black's comments, I'd also note that if you do take a look at the traffic study, you'll see that some intersections show an improvement while others show not improvement based on traffic flow. So again, that was analyzed as part of the traffic report. I do think there's been a question about the derivation of the analysis, the trips and things of that nature. Again, it is done in accordance with the Institute of Traffic Engineers, the ITE rates. And as the commission is aware, even though it is in a different part of town, we have used ITE rates to determine trip generation for projects in the rail corridor areas such as Bay Meadows. We haven't measured Station Park Green yet because it's only just come online, but redevelopment of the former police station at Delaware Street, the mode, which used to be the Beaufort's printing plant at Delaware and Pacific. And the experience with the last couple of years in terms of the trip counts that were done for those projects indicate that those ITE rates, for the most part, are conservative in terms of estimating what the trip generation would be. In other words, many of the projects are coming in with trip rates that are lower than those that had been projected. So again, it is true that ITE is a compilation of many different traffic studies that have been done across the country. Nevertheless, in terms of local validation with respect to the annual TMA report that's being done for the rail corridor plan, which I think you've, I can't remember if Ellen and Mike were on the commission when we've been forwarding those reports, but I think, Diane, you've seen those reports. And so again, that's one way that we utilize to determine whether or not the trip generation rates are valid, not only at a national or a regional level, but also at a local level.
So on the, on the report, there's table ES2, which is the intersection levels of service summary. So I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So your analysis shows that the existing average delay during PM peak hour at the southbound, US 101, Southbound Ramp in Fashion Island Boulevard, the average delay is 80 seconds?
No. I sat there for 20 minutes.
I just want to make sure I'm reading that table correctly.
You are reading that table correctly. And one thing to remember is that average delay is an average of all cars that are going through the intersection in all directions. So though you, you would experience more delay than that if you were going in the peak direction, and less delay than that if you're going in the off-peak direction. So that's the overall average delay for all of the movements at the intersection. And that's why, that was the basis of my statement that the traffic study does reflect that that's a very congested area.
So the way that you measure 80 seconds would be a highly congested.
Yes. Yeah, this, the city, just to put it in perspective, the city does have a standard for what the, the level of service should be, and that's 45 seconds of delay. So that's the goal for the city, is to have the delay be 45 seconds or less. So you can see that clearly this, this is an intersection that's substantially worse than the standard.
And can you help me, since we're talking about this table, and, you know, I'll be asking these questions now or later anyway, so I guess since he's, he's up here, we can ask if it's okay with you.
Sure. Let's, let's talk traffic.
Yeah, it's traffic time. You have, in this table, you've got the existing, there's a, there's a column called existing, existing plus project, background, background plus project. Can you clarify for, for myself and the audience what the difference is in those definitions?
Well, existing plus project is fairly self-explanatory. It's just taking the existing traffic and adding the project to it.
Being project when it's finished.
The net, yeah, the project when it's finished.
Okay.
But that's, that's net. That also accounts for taking away the office building that's already there.
Right.
Then background is adding on traffic from other projects that have been approved but haven't been built and/or occupied, such as Station Park Green, some of the other ones that, that people mentioned in their testimony. So those, every one of these projects has a traffic study that's done, and then.
Okay.
The, the city, you know, keeps a list, and that's adding those all on.
So if, so if that's the definition, the background plus project, then there are one, two, three, four, five of the eight intersections that are on here that are 100 seconds, that actually worsen from existing and go to 100-plus seconds, which I imagine is the way you define it, is 45 being the standard. That means a lot. So again, I don't want to, I don't want to take from what this segment of the, of this meeting is meant to be, but I would, I think it's important to understand, is, if there is, and what is an action plan by, by the city and Public Works to address these delays? I know that the proposed development is generously donating money to help with one of these intersections. There's five others that have delays that, if, I would consider double the city's standard to be pretty serious.
The, yes, and your Public Works staff here, they can elaborate, but the city does have, is very well aware of these problems and does have a plan to address them, you know, irrespective of this project. And if you want details about that, I'd invite you to, to ask.
Okay, I just did it.
Thank you.
So there's several studies that are going to be conducted to help with congestion in the area, including 19th Avenue. They're looking at making the one-way part two-way, so that's a study that's currently underway. The RFP is coming out, I believe, next month or this month soon. So we'll have the results of that study and how that could improve the congestion in the area. Also, there's, the biggest effect of traffic comes from the 92 and 101 corridor. So, and that's, that's not within our city, that's not our right-of-way, it belongs to Caltrans, but our Public Works Department is working with Caltrans to look at what projects can be done to help mitigate the traffic that's, we're currently experiencing. A lot of the cut-through traffic that's happening in the neighborhoods is because of the congestion on 92 and 101. So, thank you.
So since we're talking traffic, I've heard a couple references to a project that's been proposed by Foster City. I don't know too much about it, if either, no, not Gary, it's Ken?
It's, it's Tracy.
Tracy?
Tracy knows.
Okay. We'll let Tracy, so, how, where is it in the process? And is there any hope that it would improve the flow of traffic within the city of San Mateo once, once it's completed?
So currently, it's, it was approved to do a pilot program in Foster City for a period of three months. The estimated date of starting it is February 11th. And what they're doing is they're trying to eliminate people getting off the freeway and cutting through San Mateo and Foster City and using those two intersections to then get back on to the freeway. And so by eliminating the left turns, Foster City, that's the reasoning for it. So there wouldn't be any, people would just stay on the freeway. It wouldn't be worth it for them to get off the freeway if they can't get back on. That's the purpose of the left turn restriction.
Would this be both eastbound and westbound?
No, it's just on Hillsdale heading east at Edgewater and Shaw. And so after the three-month trial, so Foster City has done some counts before at several intersections, all located within Foster City, and then they will be redoing the counts as well. Our project, or Public Works will be conducting after-studies, too. So we have a nearby project that did counts of the nearby area, so we're going to use those as the before counts. And then we'll also conduct counts at intersections along Norfolk, as well as others deemed by our traffic group to monitor if there's any impacts.
Thank you.
The, in the application, the developer specifically called out Norfolk and Fashion Island, I believe, as an intersection, if, if I have that right, as a specific intersection to help contribute to traffic mitigation efforts. When I look at this chart that's in the Hexagon Development Traffic Study, the crisis intersection is Grant Street and Fashion Island Boulevard. This, between this and other projects that are in place, it is almost doubling the delay. It's 59.5 seconds, according to their calculations, and it goes to over 100 seconds in the background plus project. Wouldn't that be the more urgent? Or is it not one or the other? Is there sort of a dual threading here of looking at addressing multiple? And I don't want to turn this into a Public Works meeting, but these are, you know, pretty substantial questions, I think, that are important to the audience.
Let me ask, answer part of that question, and then Tracy may, may want to jump in. But the poor level of service at Grant is, is part, is partially, if not entirely, caused by spill-back queues, so that when the light turns green, the cars can't go anywhere. And, and so, and those are coming from the Norfolk intersection. We made extensive, extensive observations of traffic and then adjusted these calculations so they reflected what we found in the field. And so the, and Tracy did mention that the 19th Avenue slash Fashion Island corridor study that's going to be started very soon now. It's going to analyze that entire length and all the intersections along there to determine what can be done to get that to flow better.
And that, and that would impact the multiple intersections.
Yeah.
And would, and would the proposed developer contribution assist with that study or the action plan that might come out of it?
Yes. The study is being paid for, we're doing the study, but the recommendations that come out of that could very well go towards the recommendations from that study.
Were you keeping a list?
I have a couple other questions that came up. One was, how can the city approve two-story development next to one-story development? And the next was, why are the trees being removed?
Who can we get to answer those?
So the first question about the two-story developments adjacent to the single-story developments. The R1 districts, as I mentioned before, do allow for a plate height of 20, 24 feet, which means that those, that neighborhood to the south could potentially apply for a permit to do a second-story addition. Although it does seem that they are mostly single-story now, it is possible. And so currently, the adjacent property is proposing to do two stories with the plate heights of 21 feet. And then the second question was about the trees. And as I mentioned in my presentation, all but 95 of those trees are located within the buildable area. So in order for them to develop the site, they need to be able to take out those trees and then build the structures. And then the 95 trees that are located within the required setbacks have the four, poor and fair condition for whether or not they would be sustainable afterwards.
Did anyone else make note of other questions from the public?
I did. There was a good question, a detailed question, about what specifically is in the conditions around construction enforcement during the presumably two-year project timeline, around items that have been brought up around residents with, you know, sensitive to, you know, with allergies and asthma conditions and other issues.
So we have 36 pages of conditions, so I'm just trying to look specifically through them.
You know, I can start. We have our standard construction condition regarding hours of operation. I think you can see in the conditions that Public Works has their hall route condition as well as restrictions on use of the right-of-way. I'd also note, and if there are questions specifically about the mitigation measures, Representative Powers Associates, who did the environmental document, are here, but I'd just call out condition number four, mitigation measures. I'd just call out condition number four, mitigation measure hazard number one, which talks about hazardous materials during building demolition. It's in conjunction with our standard condition, which is number seven, hazardous materials, which is used by the building division. Well, it wasn't brought up tonight. There have been some, I think you might have seen one or two letters regarding rats. And we have condition 21, which is vector control plan. Also, condition 29, which talks about an emissions reduction plan during demolition permits. And actually, 29 includes two parts because there's an option of which mitigation measure to employ. Again, these are some of the specialized ones, but as you're aware, the building division in reviewing the plans has specialized conditions related to construction hours. Public Works has their own, primarily for right-of-way, and impacts on the storm drainage system during construction. I believe also, I'll have to double-check, but fire usually has conditions because they are concerned about what happens during construction of the site, much less after the site, because during construction, they're going to want to make sure that they have adequate access throughout the project site to service an emergency in case it should be arise. So, you know, again, as, as Ms. Lim indicated, we have 36 pages of conditions. I think those are some of the more specialized conditions that relate to construction activities for this specific project at this specific location.
I do see section four on the conditions, my reading of it, and I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, so again, is it appropriate to put something that's specific around airborne dust or other, other concerns that multiple residents have brought up? Because when I just read section four here, it looks like it's focusing on lead, impact soil, you know, things like that, unless I'm misreading it.
Through the chair, there's condition of approval 55, specifically dust control. And there's a lot of them down there. There's, I'm sorry, 53. 53 is specifically dust control, then there's, then there's one specifically for noise. Further down, yeah, 78, 79. You know, so, so there are ones that are more specific to each of the different concerns that were in the environmental document.
Okay.
And I'd just like to add page 25 through 34, sorry, 33 are all conditions that must be complied with at all times during construction, and those include conditions from all departments.
So we had some concern expressed by the public about infrastructure, water, sewer, power, et cetera. And whether the existing infrastructure can support the addition of these new 190 units. Does the city periodically review the adequacy of the infrastructure? And, and if so, do they ever make any recommendations?
Well, I think Public Works might want to chime in with some of the requirements in terms of infrastructure.
I know some questions specifically have been about the sanitary sewer.
And the manholes?
Right, so, yeah, we studied the, you know, each development, and we check our, you know, we run the numbers, make sure that our, that the main lines can all take it. And, yeah, so we did that. And actually, that area, the Flint, there's a sanitary sewer pump station that was just, was just completed eight years ago, maybe. And at the same time, they did a whole line all the way from that neighborhood, all the way to the treatment plant where they upsized everything. So they're actually, they're, that particular sewer line's in very good, very good shape. And then the specific ones, the people along Adrian were asking about that line. This project is not connecting to that line, so there will be no difference. The, the sewer department does go out there on an annual basis, cleans it out, TVs it, and so that's done. In fact, it was done on December 18th, was the last time it was done. So, yeah, so right now, it is, it has been looked at, and it is adequate for this development at this point.
Is that sewer line, whose property is it on?
It is on the, they have a 10-foot public utility easement in their backyards, so that 10 feet is on the, on the Adrian properties. And that is, yeah, so that's, it's, and again, the, this project is not tying into that line at all.
Okay, but there's been some concerns expressed about access. And right now, they can access it from the Office Park side.
But that, that's not exact, I mean, a public, the public utility easement in the backyard, they, a normal thing is they access it from the front, from the property that the public utility easement's on, which is, that's, and that's throughout the city.
Is there any prior notice given to the homeowners?
So it's what they do, is if they need to go in, they would, you know, knock on the door, talk to the people. If there's no one there and they can't get back there, they put a door hanger and then contact the people to, yeah, to schedule a time that they can get back there. Again, most of it's underground line. There's only like three properties that actually have manholes where they would, you know, need to actually get in the backyard. But, yeah, but they do, they give them notice if they can. Obviously, if there's an emergency and there's an overflow or something, they, they would go back there. But, and that's how public utility easements are, you know, by law. That's how they work.
There was also a question or a comment about reconfiguring the streets?
Which street?
I, I don't know. I think it had to do with trying to resolve some of the traffic issues.
Yeah, that, I mean, that hasn't been, that hasn't been looked at. I mean, there's no reconfiguration. The only thing is, as someone was talking about, you have the emergency vehicle access that goes to the other parking lot, which that will not be open just for regular, you know, it will only be used during emergencies. So that, but, no, there's no reconfiguring of Waters Park, of the road, the little, the public part of that road.
So I remember one of the earlier, well, one of the two study sessions, we talked about whether or not that roadway across the creek could be open to the residents and the office users. That discussion didn't go anywhere?
Yeah, I know, yeah, that was never, that was not part of the traffic report or anything, so I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. So any more questions? Well, I'm thinking might be a good time for a break.
And then, and then we're going to ask questions?
Yes, yes. Okay, so we're going to take a, okay. Sure.
I just want to make a comment before we do take our break. It's really important that you all have come out and given your opinions on the development in San Mateo. And I really encourage you to go to StriveSanMateo.org, which is the website dedicated to our general plan update. And that is a place where your voices can be heard in planning what goes on with our city going forward to 2040. And it's people like you that have come out and spoken on these issues that we need to hear from as we go forward with the general plan. So please look at StriveSanMateo.org and get involved in that process.
Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene at 9:30.
If you could all take your seats, if you could all take your seats, we're going to resume the meeting. Call it back to order. So now we'll move on to questions that the commissioners have of either staff, consultants, or the applicant. Would you like to start, Ellen?
Thank you. I have some questions for Mr. Cohen, if he's still here. Hi, and you'll have to bear with me.
The microphone needs to be turned on? There we go.
That I'm new to the commission since your initial study session, so I have questions that may have been answered previously but that I'm not aware of.
Happy to try to answer them.
My first questions are starting with the biology of the site, and I was wondering if any of the trees are indigenous that are on that site right now? How many of them are?
I do not know the answer to that question. I really don't. I know we're replacing more trees than are coming down, and obviously staff's already talked about the condition of some of the other trees. There's also a mitigation fund that we pay for trees as well.
And then in the pictures of the site development, it shows trees bordering the fence between the single-family neighborhood and your two-story homes. Is that what's going to be really done once that's all completed?
Yes, and one of the things we talked about with, at our last meeting with the Adrian and Norfolk neighbors, was there was a concern about root intrusion, so we talked about maybe a better solution would be to enclose the box trees so they wouldn't be going down into the ground, and that's something we're more than happy to look at. So the trees would be in boxes, and there wouldn't be a risk of root intrusion.
Okay, and that was discussed with the neighborhood?
Yes, we talked about that. You heard the comment tonight, and it's a legitimate one.
Okay. I'm also curious about the birds that may be nesting in that area. Has a census been done with how many nests are in the trees on the property to date?
You know, I think if there are questions related to the environmental document, it might be more appropriate for the EIR consultant, or the environmental consultant to answer those questions.
Okay, that was my only other question about environment, so I can circle back to that. I'll circle back to that one.
I do know that we have very rigorous requirements about when we can do construction.
Yes.
And if a bird is seen nesting, we have to change our plans.
Yeah, yeah, and I was just curious if a census had been done, and I can circle back to that. On the climate action report, there was a decision that was still pending on an EV charging station. Has that decision been made yet?
Yes, we are providing that.
And is that, that's on the outside, one of the outside parking places? One in every garage?
Either come to the microphone, or Mr. Cohen could repeat the answer?
No, all the answers, sorry.
Yeah, no, we're going to provide one for the guest stalls, and then we're also putting one in every garage.
Okay, in every garage, all right. On the setbacks on the factual data sheet, it said that there was four feet setback on the left and four feet on the right. When I was looking at the documents of the layout, it showed eight feet between the single-family homes. So I wondered if the setback was four feet per unit?
That's correct. Four feet to the property line where the fence would be.
So there's a fence between each house?
Yes, there would be. So you'd have your house, a fence at four feet, and then the other house, four feet from there.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And just to clarify, this isn't with the neighbors behind us, this is as the houses go.
Right, right, along the road, right, okay, thank you. I noticed also on the layout that there are three ADA parking places at the southwest corner, and I wondered if that was the only location for ADA parking places as a guest parking?
Given the, kind of the meandering feel that we have with the drive and then the setbacks where the buildings are, that was the only place where we can get head-in parking. And we can maximize where we have the need for an access aisle for either side, so we have that in between the two parking stalls. That said, we are showing with our exhibit on the site plan where we have an accessible path of travel pretty much throughout the entire community.
It is pretty far from the other corner.
And it's a fair comment, Commissioner. I think it was at our second study session, one of the biggest changes to the site plan was it was frankly much more rectilinear, and so a lot of the feedback we got was to create these curvatures and just a little less of a block kind of layout. And as I mentioned before, it seems easy, but there's a lot of pushes and pulls, so that was one of them. It's an 11-acre site, so I'd be happy to ask our architecture team to go and see if we could find another additional location.
It might be nice to have one in the other corner as well. So I was curious about whether or not you have an HOA planned for that, since it is a private community?
Yes, absolutely, so, and it's really important, this was something we also talked about at a number of our community meetings, that all of, I think it's 2.3 acres, but the whole array of recreational and open space amenities will be permanently publicly accessible. There'll be an easement recorded against them, and anyone in the neighborhood, anyone, anywhere, could come and enjoy those parks. The maintenance will be paid by our homeowners through the imposition of an HOA. Frankly, compared to more dense projects which have a lot of common areas, we expect these HOAs to be relatively low.
What's relatively low?
$250.
Okay. And then is there any liability issue for you with the public coming onto your private space? And if so, is there insurance then that covers your HOA?
Absolutely, and I'll say, again, we talked about this previously, we like the architecture in this project. As a company, we really focus on the public realm quite a bit. CMG Architects who did Bay Meadows and have done three of our projects in San Francisco, we think are phenomenal, and in every project we've ever done, we make the open space amenities available to the general public. And so for each of them, we have to buy liability insurance, but it's a relatively small price to pay.
Okay, and then is there an occupancy requirement through that HOA? Or will there be any rental restrictions on any of those privately-owned properties?
I honestly don't think we've got, we've thought about it. I know some jurisdictions restrict the use of rental. We obviously comply with all applicable laws. An HOA has the right to decide amongst themselves that they don't want any renting, and they can do that if they want, but we usually would defer that to the ultimate homeowner community that's there.
Okay, and you, you've mentioned, and I've heard it all through our discussion tonight, that we need, quote, "affordable houses," and I don't have a real good grasp on whether these units are going to be affordable or not. Can you tell me what a ballpark range is for the cost of these?
Sure, and there's three different levels. So there's one, the big policy issue, which I do believe the laws of supply and demand exist, it's kind of like gravity, and so one of the reasons we have a housing crisis is someone noted 19 jobs per housing unit, so adding supply helps, especially adding for-sale supply. I mentioned this in my remarks, and I'm going to get it wrong, but I would say more than two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of the units are either the attached townhomes, the attached row homes, or the stacked flats. They are in the market less expensive, they're frankly less desirable than the single-family detached homes. That said, for anybody anywhere in the world, they're going to think these numbers are crazy. I think we're from 900,000 to 1,000,001 on many of these units. They go partly on size. It's shocking for me to say that, but compared to the rest of the housing stock, it's, there's a whole host of folks who can get into those homes.
And so those are the multifamily, and then the single-family, are they included in that range?
The multifamily, it's not really multifamily, they're all for-sale, single-family homes, but many of them are attached, those townhomes, the row homes, and so that's the number I was referring to. I don't know offhand on the single-family detached, but they will be more expensive, I would think, on a per-square-foot basis, and they're a little bigger as well.
Okay. I was there today, and I was looking along the creek, and there's some very dense foliage that goes along the creek bed. Are you going to remove the trees along the creek bed that abut that parking lot area?
Well, we're, one of the things we were very careful to do was to stay out of the jurisdiction of all the governmental agencies that really govern the creek and coming right up from it, so we're really top-of-bank in. I don't have a mental image in my head perfectly as to if the trees that you're talking about are on the top-of-bank in.
Some are.
Some are, some are not.
So my, I was curious, just in thinking about who would be living there, and whether or not, I didn't see on the site plan that there would be any fencing along that creek bed, and my only concern was if this is a location for families and children, little kids, if they wander off, go down the creek bed. So that was my only thought on that, is if there was the dense foliage, it might be a little harder to get through.
It's a, it's a very good comment, and we would, again, our strict rules, we want to stay out, and just stay on our property line, but I absolutely think as we're going through the final mapping process, and we get a lot more detail, I think it's a really good point, and maybe, you know, we do want to have people to be able to enjoy the creek in overlooks, but maybe even a low fence, if you're really thinking about toddlers and smaller children.
Yeah, just thinking about that.
That might be, that might be very appropriate.
Oh, there was also on the site map, ground-level open space for first-floor units. Are those enclosed patios?
There's some enclosed, some open, it's a mix.
And are those included in your open space number?
No, those are private spaces. Those are not, those would not be subject to the public easement.
And then for those units that are along the freeway, do they have special windows, special sound insulation in their walls?
Yeah, so one of the 50-plus pages of, or 30 pages of the conditions, is that we do have to install an entire sound wall, and then as part of the environmental review process, you look at air quality, and so units closer to the freeway are required to have a special treatment to achieve the required air quality standards.
Okay. And then I'm going to make a comment, I guess now, on the traffic, that was of concern to me, not just in and out, but one thing I don't think was considered, and I would just like to get your thought on it, was that we don't know that the people who occupy that office building are leaving the city of San Mateo when they move out of there so that it can be changed. So I wondered what the thought was, that those trips may still be in San Mateo, they may move to an office building in San Mateo elsewhere. So what we're actually doing then is adding the homeowners to what could possibly be the same number of trips for people traveling in and out of the city to work. It just wouldn't necessarily be in that exact location. So I guess I don't get how you can eliminate those trips completely when we really don't know where those people are going to be traveling to.
Yeah, I think, and again, I will, I think you've heard from the traffic consultant, these are, on a certain level, incredibly complex issues. I always look for real simplicity, and the greatest simplicity of all is that in office park, we have 1,000 people, give or take, every day, coming to or from the site. As a residential development, we have 513 people every day coming to and from the site. So the number of people coming to and from the site is cut in half. I guarantee you, there's a mind-boggling level of complexity about what it does on this intersection inbound and outbound, but I know for a fact, and again, I'm so sympathetic to what you hear, one of the first community meetings, we had two very nice older ladies, I thought they were going to hit me with their handbags, and they said, "I feel trapped in my home by the traffic." And I said, "Look, I got to be clear, this project is not going to solve the traffic problems in the Bay Area, but what I can tell you is, we're not going to make it worse. We're cutting half the number of people every day coming to and from the site." And that, there isn't any debate about that. That is literally just how many people in an office scenario and how many people in a residential scenario.
And then lastly, I guess it really concerns me that, it concerns me that because we have spoken so often about these units being for first-time homebuyers and for seniors, how are we going to ensure that that's who is buying them?
Yeah, there, I'll be perfectly honest, there's no way to ensure that a senior's going to buy. The seniors, it's interesting, and again, part of what we thought about going back two-plus years ago, about what the right mix was, not going too dense because we really wanted to be able to take advantage, I don't think, I may be wrong, I don't know if you've ever had a project. I don't think, I may be wrong, I don't know if you've ever had a project where an office building is coming down, so that's why it's so different from what you're normally seeing. So part of the density and diversity mix was driven by that. Part of it was looking at what the market is not getting. As a businessperson, you try to find what the market's not getting, and particularly in the mid-peninsula, the existing housing stock, as you mentioned, tends to be very expensive, in some cases, much larger homes, and then you have a bunch of new apartments. So what we're doing is providing an opportunity for first-time homebuyers. Does that mean it won't be someone who's already got a home, or it's someone who's, I don't know if it counts if they're moving for an apartment? For seniors, it's the fact, the stacked flats were really interesting for us, and they're not necessarily common, but we do think, again, we're always, and I'm not, this is not altruism, this is thinking about being able to sell homes, is one level of living. Those units have one level of living. And for people with mobility issues, for any reason, but most commonly, we have demographically a greatly aging population, we think they're going to be attractive. So they are affordable by design, these are by design, but we can't control who buys them.
And so, then mentioning affordable again, then are below-market rate housing is 80%? Is that, did I read that right, that it's 80% of the market rate?
No, it's 80% of area, median, and income.
Okay.
So that's a much more dramatic reduction.
Okay. Okay. And what's the process for vetting those that buy those, the BMRs?
I would defer to the city. I assume they have a process, a lottery or something similar.
Yes, I'm not sure if you've met Sandy Council and Housing Manager, but they have staff that are exclusively devoted to the management of both for-sale and affordable units, that are part of the below-market rate program as imposed by the 10% requirement.
And Nick just told me, at 80% of AMI, those homes will go between $250,000 and $300,000. So that's 75% reduction or so.
That's awesome. Okay, I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Most of my questions, we got out before the break, and preponderance of those were on that traffic study. I did have, there was one question I had around the trees. And you mentioned that if you make, you put the box trees in, that that could help mitigate some concerns around roots impacting the sewer lines. But what I'm thinking about, you know, one of the benefits of planting the trees, the more trees that are coming out, is to provide the privacy for the existing residents along the south and the eastern ends. And if we're planting box trees, does that limit the size of trees that you can, that you could put in there? Is there a trade-off there?
There may be a trade-off. One of the things that we talked about is sort of an ongoing point of conversation with our most immediate neighbors, is one, fencing, and as tall as you'll let us, like if we can do 10 feet, something that was thrown out on us, we're happy to do 10-foot fences. The second is the type of trees. And, you know, look, people have, and we can't say we're going to do redwood tree or whatever, but for example, bamboo is something that grows in boxes, grows very tall, provides great screening, is reasonably drought tolerant, and might work fantastic here. That's a conversation, frankly, I think is appropriate to have with our neighbors, but we're completely open to.
Ron, so do our conditions, are they prescriptive on the trees? Do they have to be boxed, or is it, or on the types of trees, is it, how specific is?
I think the specificity is number one, the condition of approval that talks about conformance with approved plans, is the project basically the same one that the commission, and again, you're making a recommendation of the council, so the council actually looked at. So, you know, I don't think that, particularly if it's a discussion with the neighbors going from box to in the ground, is going to be significant enough to say it's not the same project. I would say, though, that we do have a formula that's based on landscape being put in, and so if those numbers change somewhat, the calculations might change. For example, they're putting in, I can't remember the number of trees that has been mentioned tonight, but in addition, they're paying a fee of $166,175 to the tree, cities' in-lu fee for trees. If things change around, then we would change the calculation accordingly.
Okay. So there would be flexibility, then, with the applicant, working with the neighbors on the types of, the type and manner of tree planting. Mr. Cohen mentioned also that, an idea around 10-foot fences. What is the size of the fences that are along the property right now? Is that something that, A, would be permissible under the city code, and B, something that would mitigate the residences along that property line's privacy concerns?
So, and Ms. Lynn might be more of an expert on fences than I, but normally with property line fences, the restriction is six feet in height, and an additional two feet of lattice work for a total of eight, and that's if the adjacent property owner agrees to it. That's not to say later on, if everyone along Adrian or the houses that are directly impacted, hey, we all want to have 10-foot fences. There is a provision for a site plan architectural review that could be approved by the zoning administrator for fences above the six-plus-two-foot lattice work, if in fact, that's what is decided on. There are pros and cons to both. One is, you know, screening of the adjacent building. The other thing is, you do have a 10-foot wall in your backyard. So again, as that settlement may be arrived at between the applicant and adjoining property owners, if it's more than the six-plus-two-foot, then I think, you know, we would need to have some sort of an action to basically approve that at a spar level, site plan architectural review.
Okay. You couldn't, you, could you contemplate it as an alternative now, or would it have, it would have to be agreed to and then brought back?
Well, I think, you know, we could look at a condition of approval. The issue that I would see is, we don't know that if, that everyone in that backyard wants to have, along that property line, wants to have a 10-foot fence. And so if we have a condition of approval that says, "You shall provide a 10-foot fence," if we have neighbors who don't want the 10-foot fence, then we've got a little bit of an issue.
Okay.
No other questions? Okay, let's stick with trees for a minute. And you did mention that the landscape architect from CMG is here? Yep. Could you come to the microphone, please?
Good evening.
So, good evening. And your name?
Willett Moss.
Okay. This might have changed based on the just previous discussion, but I'm looking at sheet L 3.02, the landscape planting plan, and the 28 single-family homes appear to have Western redbud and water gum trees?
They do.
That's what's called out currently?
Yeah, currently.
And had you proposed a size for those trees when they were installed?
There is an installation size, and I think part of that's 36-inch.
Did you give the number again? The number page? L 3.02? It's very, very near the back. So if these were put in grade rather than in boxes, how tall might they get?
Well, they're two different species, right? And so the redbuds, we're talking like, what, 12 to 15 feet? And the gums, I think probably 30, 35 feet?
How long? Forty?
That's a good question. I wouldn't say 20.
So I'll repeat the question.
The question was, how long would it?
How long would it take to reach those heights?
Mature heights? I think the redbuds is probably a matter of five years, and the gums, I don't know the answer to that, but one assumes maybe 10.
Okay. And can either or both of these species survive in a boxed environment?
That statement was new to me, and is part of conversations that have been going on apart from our role in the project, but I think the sentiment or intent is that you're providing root protection.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and a root barrier, and there are different methods to allow for that. So keeping it constrained within a limited planter will have some effect on its mature size, yes. Depends how big the planter is and...
Exactly, that's my next question. How large would these planters be?
Yeah, so I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
My recommendation would be that you use a root barrier between the trees and the easement line. I guess they're in there. I, yeah, I haven't evaluated that yet.
And still put them in grade with a root barrier?
I don't know where the easement lies right now. It's coming, is that what's illustrated along the, it's on, yeah. So you could conceivably separate these trees and their root mass from the easement that's on, across the property, which would allow them to be buried and planted in grade, right?
So back to the scenario where they're placed in boxed environment.
Mm-hmm.
What would the expected height at maturity be?
Again, I don't, depends on the size of the box and the planter, right? You're talking about putting them in a planter, and so then it's about soil volume and...
Okay. I think that's all I have for you. Thank you. So I guess this would be for the applicant. In my reading materials for tonight's meeting, there was reference to a 48-inch height-grade change, and one of the public speakers also mentioned that tonight. Can you provide more details on that?
Could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I understand it.
So the state, the comment was made that there's a four-foot grade change from the backyard of the adjacent single-family home neighborhood, and your parcel, your homes, I'm not sure.
Okay. I just learned, since I shouldn't be an amateur landscape designer, I'm going to definitely hand it over to the civil engineer.
Jeremy Morello with BKF Engineers. So the, I think the confusion is, the existing grade along Adrian is currently a foot lower than the existing grade.
At where?
On the project site, so...
At the property line?
It varies across that property line altogether. So existing grades that we see on the topo are roughly around 100, 101.
Mm-hmm.
So let's say existing grade's 101, it's, I see grades around 100.6, 100.1, that range. Our proposed grades, in the worst case, vary from 102 to 103. So it's not as drastic as four feet, and it does vary across the site. It varies two to three feet on average.
I kind of got the impression that maybe the 48 inches was the floor height of the existing building at the lower level. Is that possibly what they're referring to?
Finished floor elevation versus existing grade at the property line?
Yeah.
Is that the question? I'd have to, I don't have that, does anyone have a grade?
So we don't really know where that 48 inches came from?
I don't know where the 48 is coming from. It sounded like a difference in existing grade at the property line to the proposed grade at the property line, and...
No, we've closed public comment, sorry.
Yeah, it's not, there's not a four-foot grade difference at that property line itself.
Nowhere along those two property lines?
No, no. No, at most, it's three.
It's four feet. Yeah, I'm showing my, my backyard is to what your...
I'm sorry, closed public comment.
I know, you guys are...
Were what?
I want you in my backyard and look at, you can drive on that property and take a picture of my house in the car seat into my backyard. That means that it's four feet higher. They have those pictures?
I guess I'm not clear if it's an existing condition, that is the question, or a proposed condition? That is the question at hand?
I don't know either.
Okay.
Okay. Apparently, according to the audience, it's existing.
That's why we're trying to explain to you. You know the answer. You did it.
All right, so to direct the question, I think the question would be, what is generally the grade differential once the project is completed compared to the adjacent single-family homes, generally? Once the project is built, it's all finished, the difference between the grade of the project and the grade of the adjacent single-family homes? It varies between two to three feet. Two to three feet? Yes. Okay.
At the property line?
At the property line.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we have someone, thank you, Mr. Civil Engineer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Someone from Powers? I want to say JD Powers, but I think it's actually DJ Powers. I hesitated.
David J. Powers and Associates, yeah.
Yes, thank you. So the mitigated negative deck document that your firm has prepared has 10 mitigated measures that are required on this project. And the majority of them, oh, they, they cover air quality, biological resources, hazards and hazardous materials, noise and vibration, hydrology, and water quality. Four of them are biological resources. That's the largest number. And then air quality and noise and vibration each have two. In your experience, 10 mitigation measures, is that pretty typical for a site that's being repurposed, that's had a use on it already, being demolished and new construction?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Coney Danielson with David J. Powers and Associates, and we did assist the city with the preparation of the initial study. And I wouldn't focus necessarily on the number of measures, because there are also a number of what are called conditions of approval. So San Mateo has a number of items that, in other jurisdictions, might be mitigation measures, but because they're normal requirements they apply to development, they don't appear as, they don't appear as mitigation measures. So there are things in the initial study that address environmental factors, they're not labeled as mitigation measures, but they are conditions of approval. So again, if this was a project in another city on the peninsula, it may have been 15 measures. So there really are more than 10. We just have labeled 10 as mitigation, but there's a number in the document that you'll see that are captured as conditions of approval that do address environmental conditions, things like, you know, surveying for lead and asbestos in the building prior to demolition, or some of the air quality measures the project will implement. We didn't have to call them out as mitigation because the city already has conditions of approval that applies anyway. So I would say that for, for a site like this, this is about 11-acre site, it's developed, so, you know, it's not a green-filled vacant piece of property. So there are a number of issues that, you know, aren't present because it already has a structure on it, it already has parking, not pavement, that you would have on a vacant site. And then conversely, because there are structures and other improvements from the past, those do need to be addressed. So there's a, there's a need to, you know, deal with some hazardous materials that are in the soil from past fill on the property. So it's kind of a mix. So I'd say for a, you know, for a 10- or 11-acre site that's got an existing building, the measures that you see are pretty typical. You know, things like dealing with dust during construction, and whatever materials might be in the building during construction, the fact that there is lead in the soil from fill when the property was developed. There are a number of trees on the property. This was bayland originally, so it's been filled. And when it was developed in the late '70s and '80s, a number of trees were planted. So I think there was a question, Commissioner Mallory had a question about the, which trees were indigenous. There was an Arborist report, and I'm not an Arborist, so I can't tell you precisely which ones are indigenous versus which are not, but of... But of the 233 trees, the very large majority of them are represented by eight species, and I believe most of those, if not all of them, are non-native. So, things like, well, alder, I think alder can be a native tree in parts of California, ash as well, birch, there's 14 birch trees, 55 black acacia, 17 cherry trees, 13 dwarf blue gums, eight hornbeam trees, whatever that is, pear trees, seven of them, 14 silver-dollar gum, and then 33 sweet gum. So, mostly trees that were planted as landscaping around the office building when it was constructed, you know, roughly 40 years ago.
And I believe there's a live oak or...
There is, yeah. There is one live oak. I'm not exactly sure where that is on the site, but, and it is a heritage tree based upon its size.
So, a lot of those are heritage trees, not necessarily because they're indigenous, but because they've been in the office park since 1979?
Yeah, so based, based upon their size. Yeah, so you get, so that's what information I can provide about the trees. Again, I can't tell you definitively which of them are indigenous to the area or not. I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not that conversant in, in trees myself. You had another question related to nesting birds on the site and whether there had been a nest census. And that's not a typical thing that we would see in a development impact report like this. We did commission a biological study of the sites, and we hired a firm named WRA Associates. They're a well-respected Bay Area environmental biological consulting firm. And what they did was they took into account the different habitats on the site. So, you know, there's parking lots, there's trees, there is Borrel Creek. So, that was the primary reason that we had them evaluate the project and its relationship to the creek. And as was mentioned earlier by the applicant, they're not proposing to do any work that would be within the top of bank or below because they don't want to get involved with any jurisdictional agencies like California Department of Fish and Wildlife or the Regional Board. So, they're planning to only disturb things that are outside of the top of bank. And so, for that reason, really, the only biological impacts that we've disclosed are the, the removal of the trees. And associated with that, the construction activity could affect nesting. So, even though the biological report didn't do a nesting census, there will be the need for a pre-construction survey if the activity occurs during the nesting season. So, we're just about to hit the nesting season that starts February 1st and runs through August. And so, if the project proceeds and is approved and becomes implemented, if they do get out on the site and begin to remove trees or demolish buildings or otherwise, start construction during that window, they would have to comply with the pre-construction nesting requirements that are in the document that really implement state and federal law. So, the, the city's really saying, you need to comply with what you have to do anyway. So, basically, do a survey, confirm there's no nesting activity either on or near the site. And if there is, the biologists would figure out what's an appropriate buffer and have that confirmed by the Department of Fish and Wildlife official, and then proceed to construct. Once they're outside of the nesting season, they are allowed to remove any nests that are there unless they're associated with a special status species. The biological report did find that there's the potential for three different birds to possibly be on the site. They don't think it's likely, but, you know, they are present in the area. The, you know, the question about trip displacement, I think I can speak to that a little bit. So, you had the question about the office building being vacated, are those workers going to go somewhere else? We don't precisely know, but if they occupy an existing building that's currently vacant, then they're just going to be reoccupying a building that's had traffic and air pollution and noise in the environment already. So, that's just going to be returning back to the existing condition for that site. To the extent that they are occupying a new building, that building would obviously undergo its own environmental review, and the environmental effects of that, including the traffic from that, would be studied. So, wherever they go, they're either going to occupy a building that's been occupied in the past, or there'll be a new project that'll have its own review.
So, two weeks ago, we reviewed the project for the redevelopment of the Trags Market near the train station. And I believe your firm also did the mitigated negative deck for that.
We did, yes.
And they also had, well, they had more mitigation measures imposed upon them. And again, it's a reuse of an existing site, so...
I think that one also, the construction is somewhat different. It has a fair amount of deep excavation for a parking garage.
Right, and they're cultural resources.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because of the, and again, that site is not bay mud, this site is. So, we're not expecting to find a lot of archaeology in what had been a, you know, a bay mud site versus that site's further inland and in the older part of town, and so therefore has more potential for...
And adjacent to the creek.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the document? Okay, thank you. One question for the applicant. We have the color and materials board behind us tonight. And I notice it has the date of March 2018 on it. And I know there's been a lot of back and forth conversation with Larry Cannon, our design consultant. So, the question is, well, a comment first. The colors represented on your board do not seem to align with the more vibrant colors that we saw on the, the screen presentation. So, can you maybe tell us what has or has not changed?
Absolutely. So, the board behind you is intended for a physical sample. So, paint hasn't been applied to majority of the, the materials there, with the exception of the, the roofs. The comp shingle would be correct or accurate because it's just a piece taken from an actual shingle. The color of the metal roof would be indicative to the actual color. The porcelain tile would be, the rest of it would be a cementitious type product that would be essentially painted. So, we also did submit a 11-by-17 binder as well with colored chips. But since then, the colors, you know, had changed, at least with the six-unit building, the design of that has changed. But what's shown in the design package and what's been reviewed by Larry Cannon has been approved, so...
Okay. Just that the images on the screen seemed a lot more vibrant and richer, deeper oranges and whatnot.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
That would be the intent.
Okay, thank you. Questions? More questions? Okay, we're going to move to comments, and I'm going to do something that I don't normally do, and that is I'm going to ask to go first. Because... So, when I met with staff yesterday morning to review tonight's meeting, and I asked them what the top three issues were from the neighborhood, and they listed traffic, height and density is one, and construction, construction impacts. And I want to talk about the height and density issue. Because the applicant's asking for a special use permit to do the planned development, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Munakawa, the, because it is a special use permit, the commission has more latitude than they might typically have?
Well, it's not only the special permit that I think you're, you're referring to in terms of the planned development, but it's also the general plan amendment and reclassification that are legislative act, which gives the commission more discretion than you would otherwise have. Say, for example, the AAA building, which is compliant with the underlying zoning and general plan designation that exists. Without getting onto all the technicalities, we've had a number of sessions regarding the Housing Accountability Act, and that does not apply in this particular case because of the need for zoning reclassification and general plan amendment. I'm not sure if the attorney's office, if there's anything else I'm missing there.
With regard to the, the other actions, such as the, the site plan and architecture review, the site development planning application, with those, there are prescribed findings that are in the municipal code, and the planning commission would need to make the findings one way or the other. Okay, I, I chose the wrong word. I should have said discretion rather than latitude. So, I'm going to be proposing a condition of, an additional condition of approval that would require or ask, require that the, well, okay. This is, I'll start with what my concern is. We have R1, existing single-family homes on Adrian and Norfolk, South Norfolk. And the applicant is asking for the E1 district to be rezoned to R3, which is multifamily, medium-density housing. And I applaud the applicant for putting the single fam, the new single-family homes along the property lines that, about the existing single-family homes. So, I'm an architect, I do mostly single-family homes. And in working with the zoning code, if you have a, a single-family zoned property, also an R2, a duplex zoned property, the rear setback at the ground floor has to be at least 15 feet. But when you go to the second level, it's required to step back, and the setback has to be 25 feet. And in this particular case, since, since privacy and height has been a, a concern voiced by the neighbors, two of the floor plan layouts, the farmhouse plan and the Bay Area Classic have a bedroom at the second floor that is closer to their rear property line than the ground floor. That may or may not be true. Anyway, so my condition of approval would be that, that bedroom on the second floor of those two floor plans, which was labeled as optional, would be removed. And that way, it would give a greater setback between the new homes being proposed and the existing ones on Adrian and Norfolk. And as staff did point out earlier, everyone who's on Adrian and Norfolk now, your zoning allows you to add a second floor. I mean, it, it's true that the majority of the existing homes are only one-story, but by right, and with the proper approvals, you can go to a second level. I'm probably got this all mixed up. If you want to...
Can I ask, on your thought process, then you're saying you want to eliminate one bedroom in the single-family homes? In order to create a setback?
In order to create the same setback that you have at the gra... Let me look at the floor plans.
I think what is being intended here is that the second floor be set back 25 feet.
But that, that space has to go away from somewhere, right?
Yeah, and it would be that room that is identified. I'm not sure I'm speaking for the chair, so we're trying to interpret what, what the condition would say.
Because that's a, I mean, that's a huge, huge change to, to a house, to eliminate a bedroom.
Let's, let's, let us talk it out first. Well, it is the fourth bedroom. I mean, without it, the homes would have three bedrooms.
Yeah. But if we're supposed to be supporting families in there to have a four-bedroom house, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I understand.
Then we're eliminating one bedroom, which for some families would make it not as desirable, I'm guessing. Some it wouldn't matter, and some it might matter a lot.
Yeah. But I think the combination of having potentially shorter, smaller trees planted at the property line, they're not going to be as good a buffer as they might have been if they were planted in the grade and could grow to full height and maturity. And it's, I, I sympathize with the neighbors.
So do I.
About privacy and, and views into their backyard. And I think this is one, one change we can request that would help alleviate some of that concern.
I, I'd have to look here, but what if we made the setback, the initial setback more than 15 feet? What if, what if we were to just push it, I mean, I'd have to look at the site plan, but what if we pushed the houses farther forward to create more space between the two...
Diane, can I understand what you're asking?
I, I...
Real quick. Right now, right now, the applicant is requesting R3 zoning for that area.
Correct.
Which requires a minimum 15 feet. And you're proposing that it's a different, it's not R3 zoning, it's a different zoning that has a higher requirement. Is that what you're proposing?
So, I just want to point out that that the front setback is currently, it ranges from 5 to 22, so some of those plans may not be able to move forward as you're suggesting.
Pretty tight, as laid out.
It varies throughout the street.
Where it comes to the street.
Yeah.
And same with the rear. It's ranging from, on the second story, 15 to 27, depending on where it's located on the street. So, the north-east corner has a larger setback in the front and the rear, whereas something closer to like the south-west corner, it would be 15 in the rear and then five in the front.
So, what do you, what is you, what are you proposing specifically?
So, in R1 and R2 zones, single-family duplexes. If they're two stories, the ground floor can be 15 feet to the rear property, but the second floor has to be set back and be 25 feet. So, it has to be set back 10 feet from the ground floor. And out of respect for the existing neighborhood, that's single-family residential, I'm suggesting that we can't make them push it back to 25, but we could ask that it go back to the 15, or the, it would be 25.
I also want to point out that the, the plans that you speak of make up about 70% of the single-family homes.
Yes.
I think one other thing to note in, Ms. Lim can correct me if I'm wrong, if you do take a look at the R3 regulations, it does indicate that for single-family dwellings, it shall follow the setback rules for the single-family zone?
Is that R1?
Correct.
Could you repeat that, please?
If you do go to, and I'm trying to look up the section right now in terms of yards. Oh, excuse me, that's for side yards, never mind. No. Yeah, so that's for side yards. This is, we're talking about our...
Rear yard.
Yeah, rear yard for those properties.
I believe the rear yard one is, if it's a multifamily use adjacent to an R1 or R2 district, then it...
Go ahead.
Then it would have to be the height of the building, but if it's a side yard, then I believe, you just read the side yard.
So, again, in this case, we have individual lots. So, those are rear yards that back up onto the rear yard of the adjacent property. And when you do read the definition of rear yards in an R3 zone, it indicates that those should be a setback of not 15 feet. However, when a parcel is zoned for multifamily use, a butts in R1 or R2 zone, the rear setback However, when a parcel is zoned for multifamily use, abuts an R1 or R2 zone, the rear setback shall be equal to building height, which in this case, I believe is...
20 feet, 2 inches.
So again, as part of the requested plan development, they are seeking a reduction in setbacks. And that's identified in the findings, that's identified as part of the plan development. And again, so that's at the discretion of the commission. Just a couple of other things that I would note is in terms of the product itself, right now, the property is zoned E1. And it does allow R3 residential as a special use permit without a reclassification, without a general plan amendment. The reason that they're seeking a reclassification to a straight R3 is because it allows a greater building height to accommodate the flats that are on the interior of the site. So as an alternative, you know, you could have a multifamily project without any single-family homes, without any townhomes, that would be subject to a special use permit, without the need for a reclassification, without the need of a general plan amendment. I think if you look philosophically at what is being proposed here, and again, it's up to the commission to decide what you want to do in terms of a condition of approval. But I think philosophically, one of the reasons that you've got small lot, single-family homes is by attempting to have small lot, single-family, it's still providing a density that comes out to, I think it's about 17 units per acre for the entire site. And in order to accommodate that, rather than putting flats or townhouses adjacent to the single-family homes, they're small lots. With small lots, that is going to mean that there's less space, that's going to mean that, you know, of necessity, it requires smaller setbacks in order to accommodate that particular building type at that location. And again, it's within the commission's discretion in terms of whether or not you increase the setbacks, but there was a conscious choice to provide those single-family homes adjacent to the single-family homes that abut it, as opposed to stacked flats or townhouses. And again, that would be something that if they chose to stay within the 35-foot height and say do townhouses throughout the site, that would not require a general plan amendment, that would not require a zoning reclassification. It would however require a use permit under the E1 zoning.
And that would be a bigger impact to the homes behind.
Okay, we're talking about hypotheticals here, so I can't really say whether it is or it isn't. But again, part of the philosophy here is that the overall design philosophy of the project is trying to increase the densities and the heights of the, of the units closer to the center of the site and disperse those to the outer edges. As opposed to, let's just do R3, period. And not ask for plan development, not go with small lot, single-family, not go with the stacked flats in the middle, and instead do an R3 development typical to what you see with other R3 projects that, that the city. Now, I'm not about to say that the applicant would propose that, because I don't know all the economics of the site. But I think it is important to indicate that, that R3 zoning, you can get under a use permit without a zoning reclassification, without a general plan amendment. The reason that the general plan amendment and reclassification are necessary is to allow the, the change over to R3 and with it, the change in building height to allow primarily the stacked flats to exceed what would otherwise be the 35-foot height limit.
And just for comparison, a typical R1 lot would be 5,000 square feet or more. And these smaller lots are ranging between 27 to 39,000, sorry, 27 to 3,900 square feet.
So I live on an R1 property that's only 4,000 square feet.
So you would have a substandard lot.
That's correct. On the east side of San Mateo, you'll find a lot of 4,000 to 4,400 square foot, single-family zone properties.
So, think about that.
And then also another note for the density, they're, again, they're requesting 17 dwelling units per acre. If they were to do R3, they would be allowed up to 34.84 dwelling units per acre.
I'm going to hold the rest of my comments and let, let the two of you make your comments.
So, as the commission is thinking about that condition of approval, the applicant's counsel did indicate to me that the applicant has an alternative solution that they'd be prepared to present if, if you wanted to hear from the applicant.
All right, I think so.
Okay.
If you were.
Yeah.
Thank you, for the record, Michael Cohen. So we did give some thought to this issue. It's only recently come to our attention. We desperately share the desire not to reduce the amount of housing that we can provide on the site. We are acutely aware of the privacy concern, and it's not perfect for us, but we think it would work, that for those units in the farmhouse, single-family, and the Bay Area Classic that you identified, for the bedrooms that we're talking about, the ones that we would otherwise lose, that we will not have a window or we'll have frosted glass. Because really, it's about privacy. They don't want someone looking out. And there are, we looked at, I mean, this was done quickly, but we, as much as I'm an amateur landscape, I'm confident that we can deliver this, because I reviewed this with our architects ahead of time. And so, I just want to, obviously, it is fully the commission's discretion to make your recommendations, but a compromise that we thought of that would address the privacy concern but not cause the loss of units. For those units in question that are closer in, we would agree to something opaque so there's nobody looking into the backyards.
At both windows?
None openable.
At both windows? Because they have a corner of pair? Just the one?
Yeah, what we're trying to do, we want to have the looking sideways to the other new homes, but not looking down into the back. And again, I'm just suggesting that as a possible solution, we did, you know, were aware that this was an issue that, that folks have been thinking about and, and that was something that we were prepared to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with regard to this project, when we get projects that are requesting zoning variance or other concessions, as a planning commissioner, I personally carefully consider the community benefit that a proposal is making before deciding whether to vote or support on those requests. In the, you know, in the case of this project, I think it's been fantastic to see the community come out and speak on both sides of, but I've taken a keen ear to the neighbors who are adjoining the property line and listening to their concerns. I'm not going to talk about the notice provisions or the, the problems that seem to be happening with that. And I'm just grateful that there was a full community involvement when we delayed the meeting and, and people were able to get together. So I'm grateful for that. And I think that, you know, as a planning commission, planning department, we should think about maybe what changes can we make to improve how we notice neighborhoods. With regard to traffic, which has been a major source of concern, I don't understand the calculations that go into this traffic study and don't understand some of the numbers that are in there. I think it's important that we've been talking about it, because it is an issue in this neighborhood. It seems to me like the, the traffic along Fashion Island, along Norfolk Grant, is as bad as any intersection in the city. And I think that the city needs to take action to work on mitigating these. And I think it's important and helpful to see the developer offering a voluntary $250,000 contribution to that end to help with work to mitigate and improve. With regard to the multiple study sessions, the last one which I was a part of in the design of the homes, I believe that this developer has been extremely proactive and accommodating, not just to the planning commission feedback on areas of design and architect and Larry Cannon, but along the neighborhood feedback. I appreciate the design that they have with the homes along the south and the eastern lines are the single-family homes, the two-story, and that they designed this project to have the higher, the higher buildings, the three and four-story buildings in the center. Every planning commissioner goes and visits the site. We take this role very seriously. I also took occasion to visit a friend's house on Lafayette in Fiesta Gardens, and there are Bay Meadow four, three and four-story condominiums that are 15, 20 feet back from those property lines. And I tell you, that's something to look at when you're comparing to this design and study. And so I appreciate that this developer has made a conscious effort to just put the two-story homes along those lines. I will also compliment the developer on their flexibility to work directly with residents on issues of tree placement. They've put together a change to where the garbage enclosure is going to be, trash enclosure. They've agreed to pay for a third-party inspector to address foundation concerns. These are all items that, you know, when you look at the site, the hearing, the concerns that the residents have brought up, to me, this is a, this is a developer that has demonstrated flexibility, responsiveness, expressed quantifiable benefits to the community, quantifiable in dollars actually going to help with traffic. So when I look at, you know, requests for zoning variations, I take that very seriously. And this is a, you know, we've been talking a lot about the traffic and the other issues for this neighborhood, but, but to me, the biggest contribution that this development is making is 190 units of housing in an area that desperately needs it. And 19 affordable units in a community that desperately needs every affordable unit possible. So, you know, I would ask my fellow planning commissioners to carefully weigh the benefits of what this development is bringing to the community in that regard in deciding to approve the requested conditions. I take the feedback and the concerns of the neighborhood very seriously, and I hope that no one feels otherwise. But I believe that this is a developer that has, has demonstrated and will continue to demonstrate partnership with the neighborhood to continue to address their concerns. I'm hopeful that the city and the public works department can continue to work to help improve the traffic, which, again, based on this traffic study, is a tire fire with whether this development happens or not in those specific intersections. So that's something that needs to happen regardless. But as this project stands, I plan to support the requested exceptions and zoning variances.
Thank you. Ellen?
I actually have one more question. And that is, if there is a two to three-foot grade difference, is there a retaining wall that's being built between the existing family homes and the new family homes?
There will be, this is Jeremy Morello again with BKF. There will be a retaining portion on the, the new development.
What does a portion mean?
So, so not, not a full-blown wall. It will be a, a portion of the grade difference will be either a redwood header where it's one foot, where it goes to that two-foot elevation, there's, there's varying ways that that can be handled. And, and the public work side of things, retaining wall is three feet to five feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ken. Five feet in that general vicinity.
You say three feet?
I wouldn't consider this a retaining wall. There's, there's retaining portions there, it's not a structural designed wall.
Okay, so help me, because I'm not a civil engineer.
Okay.
So, you've got dirt.
Yes.
And you've got it coming up against a family's fence.
Mm-hmm.
And only a portion of it is going to be supported by a vertical structure?
We would support the existing grade on the neighbor's parcel up to the finished grade on the development side. So that will range from one foot for a redwood header, and then that, the areas where it's two to three feet, it will be a different, there's, there's many different ways to do that. It could be like a block wall structure, it could be any precast unit, retaining portion, anything along those lines.
So if the developers offer to replace the fence along there, then would that replacement be a stronger structure than what might be there previously?
Absolutely.
To, to hold that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Please. Ellen, you ready to make your comment?
I think, I think I'm ready. That concerns me, the, the grade difference and how that difference is supported. And it might be because I just don't know very much about it, but that is a concern to me, how we're going to deal with that. So I guess, in a perfect world, if I was to see this development out, out in the desert somewhere or something where it was just on its own, I think it was, it was pretty good. I'm not a real modern architecture person, but I do think that, that the buildings had interest, and I thought the color scheme was really, really nice, if I, if I start looking at it from an aesthetic point of view. I like the fact that the taller buildings are in the middle and they graduate out to the single-family homes, but I am very concerned that we have had such a large turnout by the neighborhood, more so than normal in my limited experience, with real concerns about things going forward. I did have one comment about the garage doors. I saw that Mr. Cannon requested that there be two garage doors versus one. And I was disappointed to see that, because I think a large garage door is a real benefit to a family to be able to have the flexibility to move in and out of the garage with, with large objects. If you have two narrow garage doors, you're limited in what you can do. So I would ask you to consider going back to the one door. And that was, but that's just a, a personal preference. Also, there was an addition of some metal roofs along some of the homes, and I thought that with the shingle roofs, which I really like, I thought that the metal didn't quite fit in. And that, again, is a personal preference. I would have liked to have seen maybe a continuation of the shingles going down the front of And I understand that there's not a real way to make sure that it's home, first-time home buyers, but I would certainly hope that anything that could be done on that would So I, I will say that I'm very torn, because although I do like the development, I'm very uncomfortable with what I'm hearing from the neighborhood. And at this point, being a newbie, I'm not really certain how to figure out where to go from here. And I will ask your opinions.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll start with thanking Larry Cannon, the design review consultant. I, having seen this project evolve through three meetings, I think Mike has been here for two of the three meetings, it's, it's been a definite improvement each time we have seen it, and a lot of it thanks to the comments that our design consultant made and the applicant implemented. He did, in his most recent letter, Mr. Cannon, leave one issue sort of hanging out there, which had to do with these step backs on the ends of the 12-plex buildings as they face the single-family dwellings. I've looked at the elevations and the other documents, and, but, the, the design has used colors and different materials to sort of articulate the different levels. So I'm, I'm comfortable with where it is now. I don't, don't think it requires an additional six inches, 12 inches, whatever we might suggest. The, it was a very smart decision to put the taller buildings and larger buildings in the center and arrange the smaller buildings around the perimeter of the parcel. I appreciate that the applicant responded to the neighbors' concerns about the location of the trash collection and has moved it to the northwest corner. Also, was that one of the study sessions? I don't remember if it was the first or the second. Mike might be able to help me. There was, well, you've added a roundabout at the entry to the project, and that wasn't there when we first saw it. And a lot of questions came up about, well, where do the Ubers and the Lifs and the taxis, do they have to drive clear around the ring road? You know, couldn't we have a drop-off point closer to the front? So thank you to the applicant for hearing our concern and implementing that. I appreciate that the applicant is providing 425 parking stalls when the requirement is considerably less than that, 391, if I'm using the correct numbers. Also, thank the applicant for their voluntary contribution of $250,000 for the future traffic improvements, although there is some debate as to how that intersection was chosen and if it was the, the intersection in most need of improvement. So I'm, as Commissioner Mallory, I'm still conflicted about the interface between the existing single-family neighborhood and this new development and how, how we could or might The applicant has put forth an alternate solution to the privacy issue, which is the obscured glass on the rear-facing windows of those. Lilly, you said 70% of the single-family dwellings?
Yes, the two plans that you mentioned make up about 70%.
So what are your thoughts on that?
So, you know, I feel like the, there are a couple of options around privacy, and it seems like the applicant has offered to work with the residents to come up with a common agreement, or in the case of trees or types of trees or tree size, individualized agreements that work for the individual abutting neighbors. It sounds like we have some options around fence type and fence height. There could be some flexibility around that. And also, the applicant has offered up the frosted windows on the rear-facing second bedroom, which I feel is also responsive to some of the concerns that the neighbors have brought up. So I, I feel, I feel like there is appropriate, an appropriate amount of privacy mitigation that the developer is offering.
Would we be able to get some kind of a show of hands from the audience that, that the frosted glass is an, is an option? Or do we have to reopen the public hearing?
I think we could ask those that are still in the chamber whether they would, how do you want to phrase that?
Would, would the addition of frosted glass in a window that, that protected the privacy of the existing homes, would that be considered a viable option?
If you agree with that statement, could you raise your hand?
Okay.
Okay.
The question was, does the, do the neighbors, and I think it's specifically the neighbors along the south, the south and the eastern fence, would adding frosted glasses to the second floor of the single-family dwellings make you feel better about your privacy? Or do you not care about the frosted glass? Is that?
Frosting glass, is it a sliding window?
No, does not.
I think the applicant said they were fixed.
Does not.
Does not open.
It's not an open window?
No.
So what happens if John Doe decides he wants a clear window?
I, I do think that if we're going to engage in a conversation, you're going to need to reopen the public hearing. So it's entirely up to the commission, but if we're going to establish a dialogue, we need to open up the public.
I think it's appropriate, it's a, it's a, it's something that the developer has offered as an alternative, so maybe.
So then I think the chair should formally reopen the public hearing.
Okay, we will reopen the public comment. Specifically on this question about the second-floor rear-facing window in that fourth bedroom being frosted or obscured glass for privacy and be fixed.
Do we have a slide that shows that schematic of the back of that house?
On the elevation?
Mm-hmm.
Check with Lilly.
Lilly, do we have the elevation of something like that?
Yes, I'm pulling it up right now.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Yes, okay. Okay. We're going to limit your comment to one minute, and we're going to, comments only from those neighbors along Adrian and South Norfolk that back up to, you can't do that. Okay, we can't do that.
Public comment.
We're still going to limit you to one minute.
Right, the philosophy here is if we open up the public comment period, anybody can speak.
Right, and the, the question is about the window, so.
So it's number three, yeah.
Yep.
So I circled the window for you. That is a window from the fourth bedroom.
What about the bay classic?
I believe it's the same floor plan.
Okay, are we ready? Call the first speaker. Remember, one minute. We have total six speakers. Our first speaker is Vincent Fobbs, please, following Alejandro Bustamante.
You said Vincent Fobbs?
Yes. Is that you, sir?
Yeah. Vincent Fobbs, 1383 Adrian Avenue.
You've got one minute to say.
Yeah, but there's only one model there. Okay, I don't know where the back of the house is.
It's, it's section three.
This is the window we're talking about right here. This is the back elevation.
That's the back elevation, so you're talking about that one window and then the window to the left? Is that for us too?
That one is pushed back further. This is the one that's closest.
Yeah, I, I prefer no window there, period. I want no window there. And for the record, we didn't talk about a plant in the box, because we couldn't put a plant in the box. And I have to put that on the record.
We're talking about the window, not the plants.
Yeah, I understand they putting, but they running a game on you, and it's, and it's ridiculous, driving me crazy out here. We didn't talk about a plant in the box in that meeting, because the slope, the grade.
Second speaker, please.
Second speaker, Alejandro Bustamante. Followed by Tony Jiang.
Frosted, frosted glass will help, but it's, if it's a bedroom window, it cannot be fixed. How are we going to deal with that?
The one around on the side would be operable, which will be the, the egress window?
Oh, so there is another window?
There's a window on the side of that room.
Okay.
So you're okay?
Yeah, no, it's okay. I mean, we are dealing with the worst-case scenario, is to have a window, to have two-story houses, that's bad. But if we're going to put a frosted glass, that's, that's all right.
Thank you.
We have Tony Jiang, followed by Vincent Garibaldi, please.
Good evening. I think the window, the proposed way, I appreciate the effort here, but I think it's barely going to be enough, for the simple reason, even the side windows, you can easily look, I'm on the fence line myself, you can easily look into my, both my backyard and, you know, my, my home through the windows. And also the one, the big, the bigger one to the left, even though it's a little back, you know, it's, you can easily see through it and, you know, have a pretty good view of, of our home. So I think the concern is, and also even the fixed one, you know, it can be, you know, changed. I don't see how, I just don't see how this can actually address the privacy issue. Don't see how, how this can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Vincent Garibaldi, followed by Ross Desals.
So I would prefer no windows in the back and have them be moved to somewhere else on the house. Furthermore, if we land on that not being an option, that if you go with a frosted glass window that is enforced by the HOA that can't be removed or replaced with a clear window. And on top of that, I wanted to point out that, you know, the style of the house and whatnot, like I own one of the biggest lots in the neighborhood, and this style doesn't match the rest of the neighborhood in the sense that there's.
Ross Desals, followed by Carol Maldonado.
Ross Desals, 20 Way, South Norfolk. I would imagine it's kind of a no-brainer. If you're going to approve two-story houses, that close to our houses, it's no-brainer to put the frosted glass. Is it a fire hazard for that room? Is it going to limit their escape to get out of that room? Is it the only window in that bedroom?
No, it's not.
So, yeah, preferably no second story. I mean, it's doubling the square footage of most of the houses along, along that neighborhood and cutting the lot size almost in half. The density doesn't match the neighborhood. Ideally, no second story. If there's a second story, yes, please, with the non-transparent glass, non, non-fixed, yes, and the HOA that they cannot remove it and install an openable, clear window where they can still see out into the yard.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Carol Maldonado, followed by Evan Adams.
Hi, Carol Maldonado, again, again, I live on Day Avenue. Just wanted to provide and support my fellow neighbors on Adrian. I've lived in a similar housing structure, Melissa Circle in Daly City. What they did is actually had half that size of the window because the homes were so close together. And then the other thought that I had in regards just over off to the height, we have Measure P and Measure H, which the voters have had in place, so the height in general is still seems a concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan Adams, followed by Sheila Faliano Zamora.
Hi there. As someone who would love to buy one of these houses, putting frosted glass is not something that you've planned out over the last many meetings. It's not consistent with the other buildings in the, in the facility. And if, if the point of a window is to add light, you don't need a rectangular window, like for opening and getting out, it just to allow frosted glass light in, you could do that more efficiently with any number of more aesthetically pleasing ways to get light into the room. But it is completely unacceptable to remove any sort of room, so, but, because the point here is affordability and getting people like me into homes. It's not, build the bigger walls, use trees, like any other town, stop micromanaging glass. It's silly.
So is that a yes or no on the glass?
It's a, it's a, it's a no.
It's a no, thank you.
Sheila Faliano Zamora, followed by Lisa Fobbs.
As someone who lives in these homes already, I'm not against the development, I understand that we need that, but for someone whose children are in these backyards every single day, my son plays basketball every single day, I just can't understand someone, I don't know who's going to buy these homes. I'm sure they'll, but they're going to be wonderful families. I don't know who's going to be renting rooms out, once they, once they leave and the HOA, it's going to be different. There's not going to be the regulations, and I just, I don't know who's going to be looking in the backyard at my children. And as a mother, it's terrifying.
Let's stick, the question is when?
I don't want people looking in my backyard. I don't. I don't think it's safe. I don't know who's going to be living in these homes. I don't know. So I don't think it's safe, and I, I don't think it's realistic to, it doesn't match the neighborhood. All of the neighborhood houses have three-bedroom standard, two bathrooms. This doesn't match our neighborhood.
Is that a yes or no on the frosted window?
I don't know. That's not a question.
Next speaker.
Lisa Fobbs.
So we're on Adrian Avenue. We have one of the largest lots. There's four houses that look over our yard, into our yard.
Four?
Yeah, four, not one, there's four. So no windows, please. And the second story shouldn't be there.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have no more.
No more. Did you get the information you wanted?
I'd assume at this point we're closing the public hearing.
Close the public, close the public hearing.
All right, so I would just note that at this point, this is the commission's decision to make. Whether it be the applicant or members of the public, we're not engaging in a dialogue at this point. This is a dialogue with the commissioners. You have a proposal before you. You've talked about additional conditions. You've talked about additional conditions. At this point, between the three of you, somehow we will come to a vote. But what I want to communicate to both the applicant as well as the public, at this point, this is a discussion with the three planning commissioners who are here this evening. And my expectation is that the chair will maintain that decorum as we proceed further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily, do you have a summary of what is being put to the commission to vote on? Slide?
The entitlements?
Yeah. So I'll just go, I'll just start, and I'll just reiterate that I believe that the privacy, the privacy concerns can be mitigated with proper tree planning that will be engaged with the neighbors on it, fencing. And again, I find that the, you know, the benefit to the community and everything that the applicant has, is proposing, to me, I support the recommendation that's laid out as is, with the zoning as is, to propose that to, for the city council to consider.
Ellen?
I try to put myself in those shoes. So I think the development is well done. It's a shame that it happens to be where it is. But also, it's the house you know versus the house you don't. And if this was to not be approved and something else was to go in, it probably wouldn't look like this. It probably would be denser than it is now. So I would rather see the gradual shift from the two-story, single-family up to the higher density rather than high-density right up to the property line. So, much as I wouldn't want another family looking down into my yard either, I may, I may opt for this versus a higher density with many units looking down into a yard. If that's, you know, if it's going to get developed into a residential area, would we rather have three stories with row houses or townhouses in that area and four houses looking into one yard? Or, or what we were looking at there, where it was two windows on the top floor? With curtains, I assume, or blinds or whatever, so that there would be some level of privacy for both, for both homes.
I think that, I think the, what I'm sympathetic to here is that it is a, it is a big change to those residents, because they have enjoyed the existing office park and the lack of, you know, joining backyard neighbors. I could, you know, I could say, I just live for myself, you know, there's three, I'm surrounded by two-story houses that all can look right into my yard. So like, it's, so I'm trying not to, I'm trying to look at it from their point of view, though, that it is, it is a change from their existing condition. But I feel like with the tree planting, I know I'm repeating myself here, but, you know, I feel like the developer has gone above and beyond engaging with the neighborhood on these issues that have been coming up, particularly in the last month or so. And I feel like there is a solution there to provide an appropriate level of privacy to these neighbors.
Thank you. So my initial proposed condition of approval didn't, it fell flat. Doesn't sound like we're going to come to an agreement to eliminate the fourth bedroom. And I appreciate the applicant's suggestion for a different solution. And I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Mallory made about if this project gets voted to deny, we don't know what might come before us and what, what, what new issues might arise. So if we could have a condition of approval for the rear-facing window on that second-floor bedroom at the back, to reconfigure or redesign the window, either put the obscure glass, make it a clear-story window, raise the height so it's providing light and sky to the room without, I mean, above, above eye level.
Or, or, I don't want to use the term stained glass, but a white stained glass window so it had.
Frosted?
Opted, not frosted, but optical, so that you can't see through it, but it's not, but it's still glass. It's not like a shower curtain kind of thing. I mean, I would hate to have it just be some, looks like a shower. So some kind of decorative glass that's more opaque.
Could we leave it?
Yes.
If you're in support of adding that condition of approval, could we just leave it more generic? And let the applicant and their architects come up with a solution? They know what the goal is. And I've been told architects are very creative, so I'm sure they'll have a solution.
And I am still concerned, and it could be just that I don't understand, the grade separation. And I would like to know that all, all of that, all of that land that abuts the property line is contained.
Would you want to see a new condition of approval that talks about that?
Wouldn't that be in scope of an existing condition?
Okay, so what I would say is there are a couple of issues here. Number one is the construction of a retaining structure in order to accommodate the grade differential. That gets checked by building and public works in terms of structural safety. That's not uncommon in terms of construction, so that would be checked as a matter of course, whether you have a condition or not, that's going to be checked by both public works and building. I think the issue is, there is a grade differential. And so the houses will be on a grade that is higher than the adjacent structures. So really, in terms of what we've heard tonight, it is that grade differential that is the issue. What I would say is that the stability of the retaining mechanism, I won't call it a wall, because it might not be a wall, depending upon how much of a grade differential there is, that's something that gets routinely checked as part of any building permit. I'm not sure if Chair Whitaker has had that type of situation with any of the single-family homes that you've had, but anytime you have a retaining structure, that's going to be planned-checked. So again.
But will it be, will it work with their existing fence?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that the applicant has indicated that they will work with the neighbors to replace.
Okay.
If the neighbors so desire, replace the existing fences.
Yeah, I would just want the neighbors to understand and be willing to accept that fence.
Yes.
As a protection.
Well, again, I think the philosophy here is if the neighbors do want to have their fence replaced, the applicant would do so. Now, I think if you want to make that a condition of approval, you know, you can go ahead and do that. In terms of, hey, we'll replace your fence if you request it.
Because that's not on our condition of approval?
No.
As of yet?
Lily's got one written up, if you'd like to see the language, if we get that far. But certainly, if you want to make that, that's entirely up to the discretion of the commission. You want to add a condition saying, the applicant shall provide a replacement fence as requested by, you know, the adjacent neighbor or property owner, I'm not sure how we've worded it, then, then you can add that as a condition. Okay, here. And again, if somebody, if all of a sudden we're going to have 10-foot fences in the back, I think what we do is we just process a batch site plan and architectural review for all the fences at 10 feet. Since, again, the limitation, you see the code citation here, 2784010, fences' height limitation, that's six feet with a two-foot lattice work, so it results in eight-foot fence.
An eight-foot fence? What did I miss?
Correct.
It could be higher, but.
It could be higher, but that's going to require a public notice and things like that.
That's what the neighbors want, yeah. I, I think that this would be a good.
I think that's a good addition.
Do you happen to have one written up for the window? No?
What I heard from the commission was that the windows at the rear-facing second-story bedrooms that are located within 20 feet of neighboring properties will be either removed, opaque, or clear-story?
Do we want that as an additional condition? Because I felt like when we opened it up for public comment, there wasn't a strong support for that by the neighbors there. Lily, it goes back to the addressing it with the trees and fence and other mitigation efforts? Or do we need to do something?
I'm not sure I can approve the site plan and architectural review or the special-use permit for the planning development if we don't have that condition in there. I mean, my initial goal was to have that room removed. And it's obvious I'm not going to get support for that. So I'm looking at other ways to mitigate the privacy concerns.
Do you, do you support the?
I would support that rather than remove the room.
Okay, could you read it once again, please?
Windows at the rear-facing second-story bedrooms that are located within 20 feet of neighboring properties will be either removed, opaque, or clear-story.
I do want to point out that some of the Plan Two windows are greater than 20 feet, so.
Yeah, I'm nervous about that 20-foot dimension.
So for example, SFD 28, which is the far-top northeastern property, has, you know, like a 27-foot setback already. So in theory, those would not be affected by that existing 15-foot setback. That's also true for some of the other plans.
So what we do know is those, those windows are 10 feet forward of the main body of the house. I don't know how you could say that precisely.
What I heard from the commission was that you were, you were interested in the windows that were within what would have been a 25-foot setback?
Yes.
And so if the window is located within, perhaps the number should be 25, if it's within 25 feet of the neighboring property.
But as Lily pointed out on the site plan. Okay. Commissioner Whitaker? Yes. And did you have a question before? The units. At the northeast corner, am I correct, Lily?
Yes.
Are already further from the property line. Is that correct?
Just a few. So there's no blanket statement if we said that all second-floor windows would have to be, or that bedroom window would have to be that way, because that may not be applicable to all of them.
So again, as I understand it, the applicant has indicated some alternative language for the second-floor rear-facing windows. So without specifying the dimension of how far it is from the property line, what you could indicate is that for those, and it's units, what type?
Plan Two.
For the Plan Twos, that the rear-facing windows shall be opaque, translucent, or whatever language we had, and leave it at that without trying to calculate how far that second floor is, just make a statement that we're concerned, now, I'm trying to interpret what the commission is saying. We have a concern about the second floors looking into the backyards. Therefore, we are going to have treatment of the glass on the second floors to mitigate that impact of views into the neighboring properties. So we can just make it that Plan Two, you can say for second-floor rear-facing windows, and leave it at that and say, here's the treatment we want for those.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Oh, boy, okay.
Someone like to make the motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion. So I'm just going to follow A and B here, right? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommends city council approval of Project PA 2018013 by making the following motions. Adopt a mitigated negative declaration as adequate to assess the environmental impacts of the project based on the findings for approval, attached in one. And approve the site plan and architectural review, site development planning application, plan development, vesting tentative map, zoning reclassification, and general plan amendment for 190 residential units and associated common area based on the findings for approval attached in one, subject to the conditions of approval in attachment two, including additional conditions of approval regarding fencing replacement and rear-window obscurement. As previously discussed.
Is that okay?
Let me just read it once more, just so we're all here. Okay. Windows at the Plan Two rear-facing second-story bedrooms will be either removed, opaque, or clear-story.
Right, okay. So that's the additional condition approval, and then the fencing replacement condition approval as up on the, on the board currently.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
This is a recommendation to the city council. Lily, we have a preliminary date for the city council meeting of...
I believe it's the 12th.
I believe it's February 19th. It is a Tuesday, even though the council usually meets on one, on Monday because that's the President's Day weekend.
February 19th.
9th or 19th?
19th.
19th, okay.
And again, that's a Tuesday as opposed to the regular Monday because of the President's Day holiday.
Reports and announcements?
Just really quickly for your next meeting, I believe Commissioner Etheridge will not be available on the 11th. We have two items. One is grading for Abbott Middle School. Because of the way that the state code is constructed, you have the ability to talk about some grading that's happening on the hillside, but you cannot talk about the building. So we may, we've had the consent calendar for a long time, we've never used it, so we may attempt to use it for that project since, again, the discretion that the commission has, you don't have discretion over the building, over the, over the grading only.
That's a tentative trip for me, just FYI.
Okay.
If there's still a government shutdown, I'm going to decide not to apply.
All right, so just, just let me know. The other project for that evening is an appeal of a zoning administrator approval of a second-story addition up on Ensenada. It's right on the other side of Alameda here. Similar to other single-family homes in that area, the principal issue has to do with At one time, we looked at the general plan vision statement for the commission at the next meeting. Some of you may be aware, there was a city council study session last night. So there will be a realignment of the process. The vision statement will be going back to the general plan subcommittee. There are going to be revisions that are made in the one that was publicly made. There are a number of other changes having to do with the general plan process. We had attempted to accommodate a 2020 deadline, which necessitated certain things to be done in order to accommodate that timeline. The council indicated that the public participation component was more important than a strict deadline in 2020. So we're in the process of working with Placeworks to amend the scope, budget, and a timeline for the project with what the city council direction was yesterday evening.
So is Placeworks still in place?
Yes.
No pun intended, but...
Yes.
Is it the same team?
There will be a new principal.
Thank you.
But Carrie, I don't recall the last name, a lot of the people doing the day-to-day work will remain the same. We do not have any items scheduled for the second meeting in February. And then the two other notes, I believe, all the commissioners have checked in with Ryan about the League of California Cities Planning Commission Academy, whether you're going or not, whether you're driving or flying. Again, if anything changes with the arrangements, please let Ryan know. Ryan will be out for three weeks starting at the beginning of February. Diana, that's why you've seen her here at every meeting. Assuming she comes back tomorrow, she'll be taking the next planning commission meeting and will be handling the planning commission operations from our end. So I'm sure Ryan will have on her out-of-office email, and I'll also send you Diana's emails directly in case you need to communicate with her. And then I think on the 31st, I had sent you 21 Elements is hosting a planning commissioners' training session. Roscoe Mata from our staff will be the staff person there who's present.
I'm planning to attend that.
And I'm going too.
Okay, all right. So if you haven't, I think I sent you the email, make sure that Josh Abrams is aware that, you know...
He is.
To be honest, I think if you show up, they're not going to be taking tickets at the door.
My name wasn't on the list, but I guess I am signed up, so...
Oh, really?
Yes.
So that concludes, oh, one other thing, we had sent to you an update of the planning staff. One thing that has also changed is Brittany Barron is back on a part-time basis with the planning division handling some of the planning applications. So you might see her name from time to time on different material. That concludes staff announcements.
Any announcements?
No.
I wanted to bring up an item. Ron, I think you sent an email about this. I feel like we should consider the concept of an architectural review board, given the composition of the commission post Diane, when Diane turns out this summer. I don't want to add bureaucracy, but I think we should strongly consider looking at that as an option to add educated, professional, and partial, you know, feedback on some of the more technical aspects of the plans that were given to review and ask for feedback.
It is not mandated in the city charter or bylaws, but it's just been tradition. We've had at least one architect on the planning commission.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the council's, the present council's goals or what they sees the qualifications. You know, I think that would be something that the commission would need to discuss and pass along to the city council since creating an architectural review board, it's got pluses and minuses. It does add another level to the process. And the interface between the design review board, planning commission, staff would need to be determined. You know, there are a lot of models out there, but it'd be basically creating it from scratch. So that's not to say it can't be done.
Yeah.
The idea has surfaced from time to time, but it's never been implemented.
Would that be appropriate to schedule for maybe the next meeting or two to have as a topic? Maybe have a presentation on the pros and cons and have a discussion?
Yeah, again, I would say that is not the commission's decision to make, certainly. I mean, you can...
Is it, so it's a city council?
City council's going to decide, yeah. Any new board, commission, working group, the council is going to decide because obviously it impacts overall city operations. I think we need to be changing the zoning code.
Okay, so it's not a city, it's not a planning commission decision to make. I guess my, my question though is more, is it something to discuss as a commission whether we might recommend it as something for the city council to...
So I've, I've given a lot of thought to this, and I've sort of put on my to-do list is to talk to colleagues that live in the city.
Yeah.
And see if I can get any, one or several to apply for the opening. And then from there, it's up to city council.
It does seem like it'd be a best practice to have one.
If you talk to different commu, I mean, I don't want to go too much into this because it's not on the agenda, but you're going to hear pros and cons, and I'm sure Diane...
Some cities require all architects or landscape architects.
I'm sure Diane and her colleagues will tell you both pros and cons of that approach.
Right.
So it solves some, maybe solves some issues, but it raises new, I mean, you can just imagine you're starting another, you're going to have another body looking at planning applications, and is that what you really want? And is there an issue that needs to be resolved? Now, fortunately, right now, we have Diane on the commission. You know, I don't know where that appointment will lie or what criteria the council may employ in terms of appointing a successor to Diane. But I think, you know, one thing might be to see where are you, or where's the council, and what does, what does the commission look like in July of, yeah, July of 2019?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are in 2019, yeah, yeah. July of 2019, and determine, well, are we well-equipped to handle the challenges that we see coming before us? Or is there a way of restructuring Larry Cannon's participation or whatever the design review consultant's participation is in the entire process? So...
Whose pleasure does he serve at?
The city's.
City council or the planning department or...
Well, we execute, much like Gary Black or Coney Danielson, we execute a contract with them, we indicate what the scope of work is, we don't dictate the result, just like we don't tell Gary Black, here's what the results of the traffic study will be. We go ahead and say, here's what we need analyzed, here's what's important to the commission, here's what's important to the public, here's what's important to the council, and we develop a scope of work. So the staff handles all of those contracts. So, you know, I, I think you can mull it over, and maybe there might be an opportunity, whether it's at the 21 Elements or at the League Planning Commissioners Academy, to also see what some of the best practices are out there. I think you'll hear probably pros and cons on both sides of it.
So we're adjourned. Thank you.